Board of Education meeting here at West Orange High School. Mr. Calavano?
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation and her God.
All right. Can I have a motion for consideration of the closed in public meeting minutes of February 28th and March 6th, 11th, and 12th?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs-Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Wardikai?
As revised to include...
As revised, yes.
As revised to include the fact that I was actually here, because the minutes don't reflect that I'm here.
President Alper?
Thank you.
All right, next up, student liaison report.
So, we don't have a lot today, but over the past week or so, I know a lot of teachers have been asking us why there wasn't paper at the school. So, I know a lot of stuff is online nowadays, but teachers still need paper for tests and quizzes, like, because you can't really take them online. So, we were just informed that paper came in today, but we wanted to know why exactly it took so long to actually get it into the building. And then, just about delayed school days, we'd be meeting with Ms. Mendez tomorrow to discuss budget and financing and stuff.
Okay, great. Ms. Mendez?
So, regarding the paper, we process it as the orders are made. We believe that the consumption of paper right now is on high demand, and so, we will continue to provide the paper as it's ordered. Okay?
Anything from the board on that? All right, before we go to the superintendent report, I've just got a couple of quick things. First, to update everyone on the superintendent search, the board has selected and hired a search firm. That's our Pat Solutions of Roselle Park, and we'll be meeting with them imminently at our next meeting on April 8th. I'll expect we'll have some detailed timelines to share with you. On the topic of rice notices, I wanted to take a minute to explain and clarify a couple of things. As part of routine board work, and most recently as part of the budget process, the board reviews and discusses staff and positions. When positions are held by a relatively small number of people, which could make them identifiable in public, say, a superintendent, or a small category like middle school Russian teachers, if we taught Russian in the middle schools, then we discuss that matter in closed session in order to protect the confidentiality of the staff members involved. Now, whenever a discussion is held in closed session that could impact the staff members' employment, as can be the case when considering budget reductions or efficiencies, we're required to notify the employee, so that, number one, they know their employment is being discussed, and, number two, to give them the opportunity to have that discussion heard in public if they prefer. Those notices are called rice notices after the court case that established the rule. The thing is, rice notices and closed sessions are only supposed to be issued when specific people are being discussed. If the board wants to have a more general conversation about positions in general, or the number of positions that might be reduced, those conversations do not get riceed and are not supposed to take place in a closed session. In preparation for our preliminary budget, a host of rice notices were distributed for the board to discuss varying positions across the district. In order to be able to have open conversations when looking at budgetary issues, it's sometimes in the past been the practice to rice more widely than potentially necessary, and that's exactly what we did. In hindsight, we shouldn't have. We did not need to discuss the employment of that many specific individuals in closed session, and as board president, that's 100% on me. I should have seen that doing so would create nervousness among our staff, and by extension in the community, none of which needed to exist. And so, I want to apologize to those who spent the past few days living in unnecessary fear. It wasn't needed. I apologize to you personally, and I won't let that happen again under my leadership. So, that's rice notices. Ms. Mendez?
Thank you, Mr. Alper. This April, we have Autism Awareness Month, and throughout the district, we have a whole host of things that are taking place to really celebrate our students and to continue to support them. So, we will be posting online all of the different things that are taking place and the activities and for the board, so that we can come together and, really, again, support our population with autism. Last week, I had the pleasure, along with President Alper and some of my colleagues, to attend the Master Chef competition at Gregory School. OMG, that was so good. So, our kids made Mexican food that had to be rated for quality, for presentation, for kid-friendliness, for if it was healthy eating. There were seven students who cooked for us in partnership with Sodexo, and they did such a wonderful job. And so, then, congratulations to Piper, who won. She's a fifth-grade student at Gregory, and to all of the runner-ups who did a fantastic job. While simultaneously, in the rest of the school, we were celebrating African History Month, African-American History Month. And so, then, my favorite, even though they were all wonderful, they were all good, was when we could walk up to a bulletin board with a live student, and you could press the button, and then, they would go into character and describe the student that they researched. So, it was so, so, so amazing, the art, the classroom, stream activities, or STEM activities, and the sensory path that we were on. So, it was just a beautiful event. So, congratulations to Principal Maketa Stupinan and her staff, and everyone who made it happen, and the parents who supported, and again, to Piper. New Jersey school performance reports are public. They are posted on our website, as well as on the NJDOE website. So, you are able to go to the website, you are able to see how we performed on state assessments, what our current demographic data is, our increased graduation rate, which we'll talk about in a little while, and how our schools are doing. With regard to committee work, the Allergy Awareness, Social and Emotional, and Diversity Committee action plans are in development. You will start to see them appear online this week, and what you will see is a call to committee membership. And so, we will post a charge for each committee. You will see an invitation for committee members who would like to participate in those committees, along with the objectives and the dates that you would be committing to in those committees. We already started to meet with Social and Emotional, the Social and Emotional Learning Committee. That was wonderful. It was facilitated by one of our SAT coordinators, Jackie Hedlam, and Cheryl Butler, the director. It was fantastic to come into a room and to be able to just talk about social and emotional learning. I think we were refreshed. It felt like a group therapy class, right? It was awesome. It was wonderful. It was great, really refreshing ideas on how we can make sure that our students are receiving a healthy education all the way around. So, that's it for those reports. I'm going to pass out the HIB report.
Ms. Mendez, on the committee work, how are the committee members selected?
So, the administration, we select, but when we post the charge, and it'll be a sign-up sheet, and so, then, parents can, and community members can ask to be a part of the committee. We'll review what their statement of interest is, we'll review how they qualify, just on interest, right? And kind of divvy it up across them. We will ask the principals also to help us identify parents that would be able to participate also on their availability, right? Because we'll have the dates posted beforehand, so that they'll know these are the commitments.
Okay. And on the allergy committee, will that go under the umbrella of our existing Health and Wellness Committee? That's chaired by Assistant Principal Melendez?
This is going through Kristen Gogarty and Cheryl Butler, because it deals with nurses, administering any necessary areas for allergy awareness, and Cheryl Butler, so that it can come under school counseling. But we can also integrate it with the Health and Wellness Committee.
Yeah, the nurses under the Health and Wellness.
There's no problem to do that. We'll make sure that we communicate.
Okay, because the Health and Wellness Committee does include nurses, so it's...
Yep, not a problem.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any questions on the HIB report? Okay. So, with that said, we're going to ask the board to kindly sit in the audience, so that we can present the 2019-2020 preliminary budget presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening to our board, to our staff, to our school families, and our community members. I, along with John Calavano, our business administrator, will be presenting tonight's presentation on the 2019-2020 preliminary budget. This is the district's plan for the upcoming year as it's related to the budget. In it, we will discuss how we allocate and prioritize in order to provide the 6,696 students we serve with a rigorous and comprehensive educational program in schools that are safe, healthy, and build a strong foundation for teaching and learning. Our 6,696 students, from the 539 youngest citizens who are starting their educational with us this year, to the 559 seniors that are due to graduate this year, for each and every one, securing their future and preparing them for their lifelong goals, and for good success, is our priority. ELA, math, social studies and the sciences, technology, engineering, STEM, and career ed, library media, academic support, school counseling and intervention, the arts, athletics, specialized populations, and preschool, courtesy busing, the quality of our facilities, professional development, and, of course, our staff, all of it. All of it is important. This year, our four-year graduation rate increased from 86.7% to 91.2%, a change in percentage of 5.19% in the year. 85.6% of our students are on their way to college, up from 78.9% last year, a change in 9%. Congratulations to our high school staff and our students for their strive toward excellence. I believe we're moving in the right direction. There is a strength in our schools. There is a strength in our programs, and it is beginning to show in our outcomes, in our instruction, in our movement toward our goals. Through our budget and district plan, we look to sustain our progress, maintain the strategies that are producing these outcomes, and strengthen the areas that still require growth. There's another data point, though. 4.4% of the 166,000, of the 166,000,018,771,000-dollar preliminary budget, the instructional program only accounts for 4.4%. While most public and private organizations and businesses have 35% to 40% of their budgets tied to personnel and benefits, the comparable number in public schools is, on average, more than double. Ours is 74%. This means that each time we, as a district, look at reducing the budget at some level or another, efficiencies impact our staff, and this is difficult. Our staff are a vital role to the success of our students, and our priorities begin to compete, so do our processes. As part of the budget process, we go through various iterations of reductions until actual numbers come in and sufficient efficiencies are found to balance the budget. These sessions are confidential, or at least, they're supposed to be, until we see them posted on social media, and they are confidential, because the layout that exists on Monday will look very different on Tuesday, and different on Wednesday, and again, on Thursday, until we finalize the budget. When we report out during the process, we create unnecessary fear in our organization, specifically for our staff. These are their jobs. This is their livelihood, yet the system requires us to rice and give notice throughout an ongoing, changing process of a discussion that may never result in a negative outcome. Under this proposed budget, while you will see staffing efficiencies presented, we do not anticipate any tenured teachers being unemployed. There will be some displacement of staff. Efficiencies will generally be recovered through retirements, and unfortunately, non-tenured staff. Recommendations may include a reorganization of structures in order to support our students, but there are no massive layoffs. There are no major programs being disassembled, not to the programs, not to the library media specialists. But because they matter, and because their jobs matter, you've come to the presentation, and you write us letters, as you should, to support the staff and any possible consideration that would impact any of them. Further complicating our ability to address budget priorities is the remaining 26% of our budget, that is impacted and limited by state, local, and federal mandates related from everything to building codes to state-imposed testing. Here, an additional competing priority presents itself: the burden to the taxpayer. This, too, is difficult. Our community support to our schools is coming from the taxpayer. Through state and local taxes, you contribute to the funding of our budget, and this year, with caps placed on the state and local taxes to your property, we used to be able to deduct $10,000, and in like, in a community of West Orange where property taxes alone exceed that, an average $13,000, you, our community residents, are also affected. So, under this proposed budget, the taxpayer will see an increase of $151.82 for the year. And while the impact to the taxpayer has decreased from $272.43 in 1718, and $224.29 in 2018-19, it's still $151, and it's still an increase. But it is an ask. It is an ask to help you, to ask you to continue to help us support our schools. Lastly, our facilities. This year, we face concerns around air and water quality. Assessments of these items are ongoing. When considering the need to replace HVACs, our estimates are coming in between $8 and $9 million. Additional capital projects, such as a retaining wall at Washington, and recommendations that may be made regarding our water, are significant challenges to our budget. They are another competing priority. And so, tonight, we will have a conversation. We will discuss the 19-20 preliminary budget. It is not a final budget. Changes can and will continue to be made until May. We will consider all of our options, receive all of the feedback, and hope to accomplish all of our goals, as we seek to provide the 6,696 students we serve with a rigorous and comprehensive educational program in schools that are safe, healthy, and build a strong foundation for teaching and learning. And so, we begin with our district priorities. In our transition, we have not yet developed district goals. Those were not developed this year. So, we've outlined here, in subject, the priorities of the district. They include ELA, K-5, instructional materials, math, 6 to 8, ESL, K-12, diversity initiatives, social-emotional learning and restorative justice, facilities and capital projects, and safety and security recommendations.
Here we have the board budget goals. I'm not going to read them to you, but they're outlined here, and they were approved by the board on November 20th, 2018. So, we considered these goals while we were developing the budget. We have budget terms, and if you've been coming here year after year, it's the same budget terms. You'll see some of the same slides each year. Bank cap, so let's talk about cap in general. When we talk about a 2% increase in your tax levy cap, it's your tax levy. It's not your total budget. So, each year, a school district's tax levy increases by 2%. That is all. Unless you have additional revenues, that's all you'll be able to increase your total budget. So, if we don't go to cap, whatever's below the cap, we get to reserve that in the bank, and we get to use that for the next three years. And all that does, it just gives us the ability to increase the tax levy over to 2%. We have capital outlay. These are funds that are used for equipment that's valued over $2,000 or building improvements. Capital reserve, it's a special fund reserved for capital projects. At the current time, we have zero in this fund. We just used the balance of that for the high school athletic bubble, and there's two ways to fund capital reserve. One, during the budget process, you can deposit money into this fund, but again, that's still within the 2% cap. Or, at year-end, you can actually, anything over 2% surplus that you left over from the budget, you can actually deposit at that point, and we have not been able to deposit into capital reserve. Debt service, repayment of building construction bonds and lease purchase agreements, just look at that as your mortgage. You pay your principal interest each month. We have our principal interest for previous projects. Fund balance, it's a savings fund reserved for emergencies. You're allowed to keep 2% of the budget. We are well below the 2% with our fund balance. Then we have the general fund, that's considered the operating budget. School tax levy, that's the bill collected by the municipality for school use. Special revenue fund, that's reserved for federal and state grants, and then, our tax rate, which is amount of dollars per 100 of assessed valuation. The budget approval timelines, we're here this evening, on March 25th. The 26th, it's actually due to the county office. The county will review the entire budget, so what we have to supply, we have to supply a lot of information to the county, so they have to go through it. There'll be questions back and forth. Hopefully, we'll get the approval, and then, we'll advertise in the paper for the public hearing. Public hearing is scheduled for May 6th. Also, tomorrow, I'll put the tax calculator on the website. So, we always talk about average homes. You can never find that average home, but you can go in and you can actually put your assessment of your home, and you can see what the impact is on this budget based on your assessment. Districts are required to seek cost savings through shared service programs. I mean, why wouldn't we do that? So, the state, actually, that's one of the requirements. We belong to EdData Services, which is a gigantic purchasing group. So, it's over 500 school districts get together, and they go out to bid on behalf of the 500. So, the volume's there for really good rates for supplies and materials. So, we are part of that consortium. We actually saved approximately $290,000 the current year that we're in by joining EdData. And then, we had the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. We have Essex Regional Ed Services Commission, 100 County Ed Services. So, we use them for purchasing non-public services, transportation services. We also utilize the New Jersey State contracts. We have Sussex County Regional Co-op for our transportation services, and also with the township, with the fuel, the road facility usage, and Student Resource Officer. So, here we're showing total revenue. This is the total of the budget for the revenue, and it's three pieces. The Fund 10, which is the operating budget. Fund 20 is a special revenue, which is reserved for, restricted for state and federal grants, and Fund 40, out debt service. So, we'll start on top. Local tax levy for Fund 10 is there, our state aid. Budgeted fund balance, which is money that we took from surplus to put into the budget, and tuition and miscellaneous. So, that totals 156. Then we have our restricted aid, and these are funds to be used to supplement, not supplant, our current programs that we have in the district. It also includes non-public funding. So, non-public schools are entitled to textbooks, security, nursing services, and what actually happens is the money goes through us, it funnels through our budget, so we actually have to show it here. All the purchases are made by us. Anything that's left over, we cannot use. We have to actually return it to the state. And then, Fund 40, we have our local tax levy. We have our state aid that we received for some of the projects, and then, we have budgeted fund balance of $2, because that's when we, when we budgeted the principal interest for last year, we have to round to the whole dollar, and we had $2 left over in the fund, and we actually have to bring it back out and to deplete it. We can't carry the $2 for more than one year. So, our total budget is 166,018,71.
This is an increase from last year. Mr. Calavano, of how much?
I have that in mind.
So, it was 164,959,70. So, what is that, about five and a half million?
Five and a half million.
All right. And last year, the increase was 4.1 million, correct?
Right. So, now, we have the expenditure side of the budget. Here's our major categories, from salaries down to debt service. Mrs. Mendez spoke about the salary benefits being the largest portion of our budget, 74%. Benefits does include the health benefits, the pension, the social security that we pay on behalf of the employees, workers' compensation, et cetera. We have special services. We tried to include all the special services budget, including transportation, the operations, maintenance, security, transportation for general ed. This also includes non-public schools. So, the non-public school students are entitled, their parents are entitled to $1,000, called aid in lieu of. Our first obligation is try to provide transportation for the non-publics. Some non-publics are small enough that they can't fill a bus, and there is no way that a bus company will be able to do that route for less than $1,000. So, then, we are obligated to cut checks to the non-public parents for $1,000. Charter schools, we have nine West Orange students attending seven charter schools, so we actually have to pay a tuition to those charter schools. Capital outlay, we spoke earlier about equipment valued over $2,000 or building improvements. This also includes an assessment that we receive each year, because years ago, we received... state funding for some of our projects, and we actually received forty percent of eligible costs. Now we have to help the state pay back those bonds. So we were assessed a penalty of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars each year. Special revenue and debt service. So here, again, one sixty-six oh eighteen seventy-one. Okay, I'm going to try to explain this one.
He had to help me today.
So we talked earlier about two percent. So if you look at, if you think about last year, we approved the budget, and the original tax levy was one thirty-five three eighty. So what the state would do is they would take that number up it by two percent, and then there's our new tax levy, one thirty-eight oh eighty-eight zero zero eight. But what happened last year is we received three million dollars, or three and a half million dollars additional state aid. The board chose to reduce the tax levy by three million dollars. So what should have happened is our new tax levy was one thirty-two three eighty four hundred. I thought the state would use that number, because that is the real tax levy number. They chose not to use that. Now, they chose to use the top number. So therefore, when they did their calculation for your base two percent increase, they're saying it's one thirty-eight oh eighty-eight zero zero eight. I thought what they would have done is take our one thirty-two three eighty number and then give us the bank for three million dollars, since we reduced it. First, we reduced to one point five, we were one point five under cap. Then we reduced another three million. That should have all went to cap, but it didn't. They included three million as, as the base. So therefore, we can say we are at cap, without using bank cap. But that doesn't look like a two percent increase. That is actually a four point three one percent increase, because I can't change the revised tax levy. I have to show that in my revenue column for the current year, and I show what my one thirty-eight, my new preliminary tax levy is. So it's really, it's actually a four point three one percent. So we can say we're at cap, but we're not at a two percent cap. We're at a four point three one percent cap. So we talked earlier about bank cap. So the upper box, one million, five thirty-one oh eleven, if you look at last year's documentation, you'll see that's the amount that we are under cap. That now is in a bank for us to use if we need to use it for the next two years. And then we, there's a healthcare adjustment. The state realizes that with a two percent cap, health benefits don't come in at two percent or one and a half. They come out, they come up to nine, eight, twelve percent increase. So they allow you to take an adjustment. So this adjustment of seven seventy-eight three three two actually represents four point six percent adjustment of our, of our current health benefit projection. Our health benefit does not include the dental, so it's just medical. So based on our projection for next year, we're able to increase our budget by another seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand three thirty-two. So this is what's available for us to increase if we choose to increase the budget.
Did we take any of these adjustments or use the bank cap in this one?
Here's the total tax levy. There's one for the operating budget and one for debt service fund. So the two totals to one forty-three eight sixty two sixty-five. Here, we showed the difference from one school year to the next school year, the general fund and a debt service fund. You'll see again, the four point three one percent that I spoke earlier. It's not two percent. So it is four point three one. And then we have a small decrease in the debt service. This is how taxes are struck. It's based on the calendar year, and school year is from July to June. So you're actually taking half of, half of one year, the eighteen nineteen, and half of the new year. Combine that together, and that's how you come up with your calendar year tax levy.
Okay, so now, those were the figures for this budget. And now we're going to talk about our budget priorities as it relates to what the program, what the budget will maintain, sustain, add, and/or potentially reduce. When we're considering our budget priorities, we've aligned them to three major areas, including our board budget goals. The first is the instructional program. So in ELA, K through five, we've been listening to our staff talk to us about the need for instructional materials in reading and writing through our listening sessions, through our meeting times. This is a primary concern for our elementary teachers. And therefore, in this budget, you will see instructional materials embedded in order to support the ELA balanced literacy program at the elementary level. In math, six through eight, in two thousand sixteen seventeen, we had devised a strategic plan goal to evaluate the math program at the middle school levels. So that year, they started evaluating our current program, CMP, and the findings were that it was being heavily supplemented with Glencoe by the teachers. We followed with a formal evaluation last year, where the committee made recommendations to the board to replace the current math program in grade six through eight. This year, they, again in committee, looked at various programs, have narrowed it down to two programs, and are in the process of piloting, with the intention of implementing for the nineteen twenty school year, the new math program. So in our budget, you will see funds allocated for that selection. ESL, K twelve, and primarily at the elementary levels, last year, we talked about the need to meet the mandated number of minutes in order to be compliant with what ESL students are required to have as a part of their instruction. So in our budget, you will see the support by adding two teachers to the budget in order to address the needs of those students. Health education. At the elementary level, we do not currently offer health. We offer PE. It is a state requirement. We need to offer health. A lot of our concerns about social, emotional, all of the things that are really dealing with our students, nutrition, healthy students in our schools, fall under health education. So here, we have added health to the elementary program. Academic intervention. We currently have basic skills through Title I funding at our elementary level. When we go into grade six through eight, we have no support, no intervention for our middle school students that would resemble academic support. So in this budget, we're proposing that we need to ensure that our middle school students continue to receive the academic support as necessary in grade six through eight. Summer institute, nine through twelve. Last year, the high school successfully submitted a proposal to begin credit recovery at our high school for our students, and this year, they're adding opportunities for students who, who would like to accelerate their learning. So on the other end of credit recovery, then there's acceleration. What about the students who'd like to skip a course or take a course in the summer during our institute so that they can take additional courses in their year? And continued efforts with curriculum development. When it comes to supporting our staff for the elementary K five, then we need to be able to provide those instructional resources and materials to support teaching and learning, not only in ELA, but across the different content areas. We need to continue to provide professional development in the areas of sheltered instruction. That's for the general education teacher to be able to support our ESL students, our second language learners. In the area of mathematics, for the new math program that's coming in, in grade six, eight, whatever that choice might be. Interventions, so that we can continue to provide our students with the support that they need throughout their coursework and in grade six, eight specifically. And reading instruction, that is a priority that continues to exist throughout every area of our budget. As it relates to safety, security, and facilities, the board, the board approved a safety and security audit that took place this year. It's just finished. Stonegate Associates went through all of our schools, met with our principals and staff, did walkthroughs, and have made recommendations around safety and security in all of our schools. They will present to the public and to the board on April eighth, what those recommendations are. And so then you will see budget, in, in this budget, you will see allocations made in order to prepare to receive those recommendations and be able to implement them. Water quality, air quality, facilities and maintenance continue to be a very large concern in our district. And so we will talk about that in detail as we near the end of the presentation. School visitor kiosks. Think that should be under the safety and security audit, but we are going to bring in school visitor kiosks into all of our schools under this budget, so that we can, again, address the safety and security of our schools. Transportation, then, is our last identified priority here. We've heard a lot from our student board liaisons and from our students at the high school regarding transportation, geo-mapping, and Z-Passes and smart apps. And so then, in this budget, we have included budgeting to pay for those subscriptions, which are nominal, but they're here, they're present, and they are a priority. So to accomplish our priorities, the budget will continue to support and maintain all of its district programs. Athletics, co-curricular activities, fine visual and performing arts, gifted and talented K five, library media, middle school sports, related arts, STEM and STEAM or stream, and world language. We will add, under this budget, we are proposing the following positions. A special education teacher, an occupational therapist, two ESL teachers for elementary grades K five, and three academic support teachers for grades six through eight. We will recommend in this budget to add and support the following programs, curriculum and instructional materials. Health education, K five, the math program, six, eight, the ELA instructional materials to support our balanced literacy program, the continued curriculum development across all content areas, and expand our summer institute to include opportunities for accelerated We will add, or recommend to add, support for the prof, for professional development in reading and writing instruction, K eight, math, six, eight, content area professional development, K twelve, academic intervention, six, eight, sheltered instruction, K twelve, diversity, cultural proficiency, social, emotional learning, and restorative justice, and crisis prevention intervention training. If you'll notice, we are making sure that we address our goals as a system. Instead of just thinking about materials on this side, we have to think about materials, we have to think about professional development, we have to think about the programs in order for us to systemically address our goals and ensure our outcomes. In the area of technology, we include our laptops for teachers. Currently, our teachers have desktops that do not all work. They need laptops in order to be able to work more efficiently. Our high school Chromebooks are four years plus old, and we have some significant needs at the high school with the Chromebooks and reparations and damages, et cetera. So we are budgeting for the Chromebooks to continue to support our one-to-one initiative. And updating our computer labs for business education at the high school will be found in this budget. We talked about our transportation initiatives. We will also add the safety and security recommendations, and consider assessing our spending measures for our special education budget. Now we're going to talk about the budget efficiencies, reductions, and savings. The proposed budget includes the following reductions due to efficiencies. Tuition-based programs based on graduating students. So we have students who were in tuition-based programs, but now they've graduated. And because they have, we have, you know, we can reduce the budget in that area. Equally, related and extraordinary services based on changes in individual program needs. From year to year, the students' needs change, and therefore, we don't have to continue to provide the same services, or they graduate out or exit out of the program. So then we can reduce the budget in that area and find those efficiencies. Across the district, K, pre-K twelve, we have eight point six FTEs due to staffing efficiencies. Substitute usage for professional development. What we have found in going through this budget in each area, in order to find the efficiencies to bring the budget to balance, is that in the past, substitute usage was budgeted in some, in total. What we need to be able to do is break out the substitute usage. Which part of the substitute line really addresses absences in the staff versus which parts of the substitute address coverage for professional development? We spend an extraordinary amount of money on substitutes for coverage for professional development. And so we need to be able to budget that appropriately. So for every time we say, I'm going out of district on school business, then we need to add a substitute into the budget. We will be doing that this year. In analyzing this, then, we were able to reduce our budget by saying we will reduce the times we go out of district for professional development, or consider the times that we have professional development in district requiring a substitute. And we found efficiencies here. Consolidation of our technology programs. Do you want to talk about that, John? That's the cable and the...
Well, what we actually did was, we negotiated with another company, and we were able to get substantial savings. So we budgeted those savings in next year's budget.
Okay. Transportation routes. This was huge. So I learned a lot. We, being a, a transportation committee, we met with Hundredan and their superintendent and our contracted services and all of our directors in those areas, and we put every single bus route on a screen for eight hours. And we really analyzed and said, why do we have this cost in transportation? And so in previous years, we've had double and triple routes. What that means is, the bus goes to the high school first, drops off the students, then goes to the middle school. That's a double route. Same bus, double route, efficiency. It costs almost twenty thousand dollars less to have a bus with a double route than it does to have two single routes, right? The same goes for triple routes. The bus goes from the high school to the middle school to the elementary. That's a triple route. That's an additional, very large savings. Multiply that times all of the routes we have in district, and we find that in past years, we've had double and some triple routes, and this year, we had eleven single routes. Each single route costs fifty-three thousand two hundred dollars. So what's the next natural question? Why do we have single routes? And here is the answer. We schedule our double routes, we schedule our triple routes. And then we have to make a modification to a bus route, because perhaps there's a need for a student to be picked up on this block on this corner, because it's closer to the home. Or because we don't have sidewalks, so please pick up my child on this corner closer to the home. And one request may be granted, and two requests may be granted, but when we honor large number of requests, for each, the bus route is backed up by two minutes, five minutes, ten minutes. And now we don't have a double route. Now we have a single route. And for every time we make adjustments to the stops on the routes, it costs us fifty-three thousand two hundred dollars. And so we work diligently to say, how are our routes? Let's look at each individual route. Let's look at the time, and let's make sure that we can stay within double and triple routes, as much as possible. Nothing is, right, black and white, but as much as possible. In addition to that, we found out that we cannot go from double routes to single routes, because the time in which our school starts is too close together. Our elementary, our high school, and our middle school times. If we span that by five minutes, we can convert most of our single and double routes to triple routes. So that will be a part of our proposal as we continue to move through these presentations. The next thing in transportation is that we have buses for general ed kids and separate buses for special education students. So there's a possibility... So there's a possibility, and I'm not talking about an IEP or where it's necessary, right? I'm outside of that because we have to respect that. But there is possibility, and often, where a bus will pass a house to go to the corner to the stop to pick up the general education students, and not pick up the student that it could pick up on the same block, because a different bus is scheduled to pick up that child. And for each bus route, that costs an additional $53,200. So we were able to find very nice efficiencies here in transportation. And our team is continuing to look at all of the areas, because we normally just go to staff, or we normally go to the big, right, the things that we know. But we're really working to look at, where are the efficiencies in all of the areas of the budget? Reductions due to student enrollment and retirements. So this happens every year in a budget, it's normal, it's attrition. And based on classroom size, so if a class has less than 10 students, it can't run. Or at the elementary level, if we had five sections of first grade, but the bubble coming up only requires four sections, then those are natural attrition and efficiencies. And we also have breakage from retirements. John, can you talk to us about breakages?
So once we get a retirement, what we do is, we look at the salary of the person retiring, we estimate what the payout would be for unused sick days, and then we estimate what the new salary will be, and there's always a difference. And we actually take that difference into consideration when we're building our budget. And we'll continue doing that until we final, you know, we have the final adoption.
And benefits. So this was like a little cash cow.
So benefits, we had Horizon, and this year, we moved to BennyCard for prescription and Aetna for medical. And because we just moved, there's really not too much history of the claims. So it took a little while for the broker to get back to us to give us some good rates. So with our prescription, when we had the first-year deal, the second year, they said they'll, we're capped at 14. We will not go any higher than 14. So at that point, we had to use 14. Last week, they came back, they were able to negotiate down somewhere around 5%. Medical premiums, we estimated at 12%, and they were able to get down to 11% at this time. So we made those adjustments before coming, you know, to tonight's meeting.
Yeah, so I think this is a good example of what happens in those iterations of budgets, and why we can't kind of jump the gun, right? Because at the beginning, we may be dealing with a 14% premium and benefit, and it would require us to reduce the budget by X amount. And then the very next day, it could drop, right? We received our numbers by 5%, and now we no longer have to cut by that amount, and we can continue to add. So this is, I think, a good example of how the budget could change from day to day until we actually move into preliminary. And then today is not final. This is just a preliminary budget, right? Today, we discuss, today, we decide, the board will vote if we want to send this to the county, and then we still have until May to make all of the changes. And in that timeframe, we will continue to go through and comb through the budget to search for even more efficiencies. This proposed budget also considers the following reductions: the out-of-district professional development. So we're going to consider a freeze for going out of district next year on professional development, and I'm specifically speaking about school business. So we've allotted a smaller amount than normal. It's not totally frozen, it's not zero, but we are looking at that. And with this, we can also save on all of the substitutes that's required to go out. So we thought that this was an area that we could find an efficiency in, that really didn't impact us as much, because we offer so much professional development inside. And all of the teachers will still get their 20 hours. The 7:00 PM late bus, buses at the high school. In addition to offering courtesy busing for all of our schools, we offer four late buses at the high school. There was a 3:30 bus, I think a 4:30 bus, a 5 o'clock bus, a 7 o'clock bus. So what we're proposing is to consolidate, to go from four to three late buses. Instead of a 3:30, it would be 3:45, we'd shift the second one to 5:30, the last one to 6:45. So now we could still get all of our students home from basketball and all of their after-school practices, right, because the latest one is the basketball. We could still offer all of our co-curricular, they would not be impacted, but we don't feel that we need the four bus runs. And then the last one is equipment. So here are our budget and funding challenges. Capital projects not included in the budget. Our unit vent repairs. These are the HVACs, and I started off with this. The estimates are between eight and nine million dollars. This wouldn't have fit in the budget. Retaining wall at Washington, that's approximately $500,000. And whatever the recommendations are around quality water when they come in, we would have to consider these. So John, do you want to talk about how we might propose that?
Well, the one thing we're looking at is, I know the Essex County Improvement Authority has a program where we may be able to have them help us bond for these unit vent repairs. This is, this is an item that should not be in the budget for a one-year hit. It really needs to be spread over a 20-year period. So they actually had a meeting scheduled for the day it snowed, they canceled it, and they're trying to reschedule. I asked if we can meet, you know, be prior to the meeting, because I think we need to move on this right away. So hopefully, we can get together with them and see how they can help us. And the other two items, we just need, we have to wait until the quality water recommendations come in, and if we have any room within the budget to do the retaining wall. Tax impact. So you're looking at the average home of $338,561, and you look at it, $151.82 increase for the year. So this is for your general fund and your debt service tax levy as a combination. Again, tomorrow, the tax calculator will be on the website. Feel free to go in, put your assessment in, and then you can see what your increase will look like.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take questions from the board, starting with Ms. Trix Gals.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to thank Mrs. DeMendez for her budget presentation. This is never easy. In my past life, I was in a seat similar to hers, and I certainly understand the challenges that an administration goes through in trying to make sure that you are meeting the needs of your students, your employees, taxpayers, and continuing to make improvements. And so where we would never want to see an increase, salaries certainly go up, benefits certainly go up, and as we continue to make improvements for our district, that comes at a cost. And so I appreciate that we're making improvements. The board is fully aware that this is a preliminary budget. We are still in conversations. We have until May. There may be additional cuts during that time. And so, again, I want to thank you for all of the work that you and your team put into this. This is no small task. I'd also, I'm very pleased to see that the allergy awareness committee is taking off, as well as the diversity committee. And I would like to thank Ms. Ruffo, who's here tonight, who I think was the impetus in getting that going. The Autism Awareness Month, that's always a special time to recognize our special students, and so I look forward to the activities that are upcoming. So thank you.
Ms. Morika.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of questions. In going through, first of all, thank you to the administration and Ms. DeMendez and Alicia Calavano for all your hard work putting this together. This is definitely not easy, and, you know, from year to year, it's really tough to increase our budget, because that increase gets passed on to the taxpayers, so that's, it's really a tough decision to make. You mentioned the safety and security evaluations are completed. When was it completed, and when will we be getting that figure? I know you said we're getting a presentation soon?
Yeah, so it was completed last week. They are working on the report. They will be present at our next board meeting, so they will be able to present all of their findings to the board and to the public. And that will be followed up with, I believe, like an 80-page report that goes through every school with the pictures and specific recommendations. In our budget, we've allotted for this year, I think it was $150,000. Again, that's a placeholder that is an if, you know, or based on what the board approves of, so again, we're in preliminary.
Okay, I was going to ask you, how did you arrive at that figure? And I know since we had started working on mantraps last year, we've since found out that they are not required or illegal?
Well, let's not use that word. So we're going to change the word.
Okay.
All right. So when we spoke with Stonegate, and those are, that's the association that conducted the audit for our safety and security, they said that an estimate for the costs or recommendations would be approximately $250,000 in total if we did everything. So what we did was, we said, "Well, what could be a realistic or feasible year one?" Because we don't have that in this year's budget, and we may not even need everything or be able to do everything in a year one. So they suggested we split it that way, the 150, and then the subsequent 100 for next year. However, again, that's going to be based on what we choose to implement, what vendors we choose to go with, and what those prices come in at. With regard to the mantraps, we removed them from this year's budget, or the remaining balance of that, and worked it into the safety and security recommendations, because currently, the way the mantraps are installed, the first door, so for us who aren't aware of what a mantrap is, it's the vestibule. So let's say we enter into the high school, there's the first set of doors, then you walk in, and there's a vestibule area, and then there's a second set of doors. The way our mantraps are set up, or our vestibules are set up, is that the first set of doors are unlocked, you enter, and then the second set of doors are locked, and then you have to be buzzed in, or you swipe in. It should be that both doors are locked, so that when people are coming to visit, or if there's someone who we do not want in our buildings, that they don't have that first point of entry, that they are locked out from the beginning. They have to be buzzed in from the beginning, then they enter the vestibule, if they are permitted to enter. And in the vestibule, we will have a lobby guard, if you will, right, where they have to swipe their ID. And you saw that in the presentation. And then at the second door, set of doors, then the security guard and/or person who's buzzing in will then see if their ID was valid, and then choose if they are a safe person to allow into our buildings. That's the way it's supposed to work. So what we have to do, then, is reconfigure the way it is, and we're not going to continue installing, because that, it's not being installed properly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, jumping around. So for transportation, I know, my figures may not be current, but you will correct me. We generally transport about 5,000 students. Is that still correct? Okay, and we have about 110 students that are out of district that we also transport.
I'll get that number for you, but yes, it's approximate.
Okay, I know last year, when we had Snowmageddon, for lack of a better phrase, when you came back with recommendations for transportation, you talked about adding smaller transportation services so that we would have more options as opposed to just the one. Are we still looking at doing that in case of another emergency?
Do you want to talk about that?
I think, I think we talked about it earlier. Even if we had another bus company to help us, they were stranded that day too, wherever they were. So there was nobody available, and if it happens again, we're going to be in the same situation with other bus companies.
And I think it's also important to note the following. We've been with our contracted service ESC for how many years? Twenty-something, thirty, since the 80s. They have frozen us, and they do not increase us every year. And so then we are at a very good position with this company in our pricing and in what they, what they offer. If we were to go out to bid now for our services as a whole, that return cost, or what the pricing might be, is going to be subsequently higher than what we're currently paying now. So I think we have to continue to analyze the whole of the picture versus, before making a very quick decision, right? We still have two years on our contract, so while we are in the two years, we will explore all of those options, we are exploring. But I think that's just something that we also have to be aware of.
Okay, I'm referring to your, to your solution for what happened in November, where you said we could have, in addition to ESC and Hunterden, we would have smaller bus services, so you could break up the routes, so that if something was happening at Redwood School, you could just send a smaller bus company, whether that's major, or mayor, or for a student or another smaller route.
Whose pricing is more expensive, as we've explored, and then would break up our double and triple. As a backup, we can do that.
Because we have nothing as a backup, which is what happened in November 15th.
Got it.
We have no backup. In addition, I know we've had problems with ESC and Hunterden in the past, where I know we had to reprimand them based on our contracts, because they, the buses were running late, or we had personnel issues. So I would really like you to take a look at that. I know you say it's expensive, but we need to make a better effort at that. Granted, this is not a final, final budget, it is a preliminary, but I have to say that it's great that we, we, we always wanted to improve and update our curricula, but I just find it hard to, to accept that every two years, we're buying new curriculum, whether it's for English Language Arts, math, or other programs. I'm not sure why we're not assessing what we currently have and improving on it, as opposed to buying something new every couple of years. It just, it's just not cost-effective. And I know you've, you've gone over trying to explain this to me, you're saying that it's a three-year stretch of the programs, but literally, every couple of years, we're approving brand-new programs. Instead of going back and take, assessing what we currently have, whether or not it's being implemented or rolled out properly? I just want you to speak to that. I believe the ELA supervisor is here, and I don't know if the math supervisor is here, but I'd like you to speak to that, because I've gotten a lot of calls from, you know, parents who are asking me the same thing. Why are we, again, buying another ELA program, another math program?
We're not. All right, so let me clarify again.
Please.
All right, just for all of us. First, we're not buying new programs, with the exception of math 6-8, that is the new program. So it's not across the content areas. It is not true that we are changing everything and changing programs. We've made zero changes, we're maintaining. We are in process for evaluating our math 6-8 program. That's it. Let's talk about ELA first. ELA, we evaluated the program this year, we're in process with that. Our teachers, since last year, expressed concern about needing instructional materials to support the balanced literacy model. They are in need of those materials, not only by perceptual data, surveys, or listening sessions or conversations, but we actually met with the teachers, went into the classrooms, looked at the materials that they had, and they are in need of materials. We are not changing a program, we're not adopting a new program. What we're doing is providing them with the materials they need in order to effectively implement the program that they have. All right? So that is not their, you know, they're bringing it to our attention, we have to respond, and the need is great. It is not a, a small need. We don't need our teachers on Pinterest and online and printing things and copying things and spending their evenings and enormous amount of hours to find resources. That is our district responsibility. And so when we adopted the balanced literacy program, we adopted the classroom libraries, and we adopted a scope and sequence, but we didn't adopt all of the materials that they need in order to effectively implement the program we're requiring them to implement. So no new program, we are adopting, or we are supplementing with all of the materials. We are adopting or we are supplementing with all of the materials that they need for their program. Math. In 2016-17, there was a strategic plan goal. And in that goal, it said to evaluate the K-through geometry math program. We began that evaluation in year, this would be year three of the evaluation, right? In year one, they first started with, let's look at the CMP program. Their findings were that they needed to heavily supplement it with, what is it? Glencoe. And the teachers were very concerned about the uneven outcomes that were being produced in the students, the abstract thinking that was required by the CMP model, and a whole host of other very large concerns, to which they were in consensus about, all 6-8 teachers. They then said, as a year-two goal, which was last year, they were going to evaluate the program formally. That was our district initiative, and they used the IMET tool. And they went a year process-long of evaluating the math program. After that committee completed that evaluation, they presented it to the board to include next steps for this year. So this is now the third year that they're in that process. So this year, year three steps were two. Look at different providers, look at different programs, see which ones they believe would best meet the needs of our students based on our data, based on our standards, based on our parent input, et cetera. Select that program, pilot it the second half of this year, and at the end of this year in May, make a recommendation to the board on which program they've selected. And so we've seen through the parent meetings and the different postings that they are between two programs, Reveal and Ready Math. They are piloting those in grade six through eight. And the budget, therefore, holds a placeholder for whatever program they select. We are in process. It is appropriate to adopt now the new math program in year four, which is next year. So this is not a new thing. This is not something that kind of just came about or that we're adopting every two years. This is something that's been in progress based on the performance outcomes that are less than desirable for our students and the inefficiency within the program itself. We've had CMP for quite some time, so we do not get it every, you know, every two years. Now, elementary math will come up next year. Why? Because it expires. The contract expires. After five years, the state requires us to reevaluate our program. So that's the state that does that. Every five years, you must reevaluate the program, and we are in our cycles. We are not choosing to adopt something new now randomly, right? We are in our cycles. So the placeholder is specifically for Math 6-8. The board's support of including Math 6-8 in this budget does not mean that the board is agreeing to the choice or which program that will come with a full presentation and a viewing of, right, of the whole process. This just says, all right, we're in year three, we know that year four is coming, and now we will have to budget for that program. So let's allot for that, so that when we're ready to choose, when we're ready to select our program, the money is present.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Now, another question I had was regarding technology, but you answered that offline. But for the public, in this budget, we are adding 2,000 computers for students, 500 computers for faculty and staff. And I see Mr. Santiago is here. And every year in our budgets, we add to 2016-17 budget, we had 2,100 Chromebooks, grade three to six, computers for classrooms, K-2, laptops for each teacher, pre-K-5, 50 iPads. 2017 to 18, we had Chromebooks for classrooms, grade one and two, touchscreen Chromebooks for every K-classroom. And last year's budget, 350 Chromebooks for new students and backup loners. So now this year, we have 500 computers and 500 for teachers and 2,000 for the students. I just want clarification on whether or not we're spreading this out over a few years. Because when we first implemented our one-to-one device initiative, we wanted to do that over three- to five-year periods so as not to hit one budget and to minimize the impact on the taxpayers.
Correct. So in terms of the 500 units, they're actually laptops for teachers. And this started last year. So last year, in the budget, was 500 of laptops for teachers. And we were anticipating that in this coming year, in January of 2020, over 50% of our desktops can be obsolete. Right, yeah. Okay, so to repeat that, so we started this last year where we submitted for the budget, it was actually a preliminary budget, 500 laptops to replace teacher-faculty laptops. They're obsolete. They're still obsolete. They're five years old. And we knew that over 50% of our inventory this year in January 2020 will become obsolete. They're old. For example, at the high school, we have three computer labs. They're nine years old, bottom 2010. Nine years old is a pretty long time for a desktop. We've been able to maintain those. The biggest challenge was, given that January 2020, Microsoft no longer support anything that runs on Windows 7, the majority of our desktops are gonna become obsolete. These are desktops and computer labs, desktops and classrooms. So we had started last year planning to say, hey, we need 500 laptops to give to teachers. And at the same time, we want to start this phasing out of desktops and bring in those laptops that will, one, replace the desktops in the classrooms, and, two, give teachers really good solid laptops, because they have really old obsolete laptops as well. The teachers' laptops are five years old, 500 of them. And the rest of the inventory is a little bit newer, but again, that was a phase-in process. So last year, we had on the budget, it did not go through. The preliminary, it was listed as 500 units. And Mr. Ruskey, after the $3 million shortfall, said basically, we're cutting that out of the budget. So this year, we're asking again for 500 laptops to, again, to do two things. Hit two birds with one stone. One is get rid of the desktops, the majority of the schools and the classrooms are obsolete as of January 2020. Give teachers nice new laptops, the ground batteries, where they have mobility, yet they can connect to their smartboards. And we're not gonna replace these desktops. So if I answered the question, respect to that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
No, thank you. You've answered it. I know usually we have a technology plan that you submit for the board approval. We haven't seen that this year yet.
No, the technology plan hasn't been required for a number of years. So what we've done as part of the future ready, we've done an action plan. And also, we want to incorporate that into a strategic plan, which maybe revises and move forward, and that'll be part of the plan, if you will. It's also important to know that what we typically have done is we take, the business ed labs are a really good example. Right now, the three business ed labs are six years old. And the library computers, desktops are also six years older, right? So what we typically try to do is, the labs are really highly used. And when I say highly used, I mean every day for 200 days, if you include the summer program, times six years or eight years. If you look at that, every day being used by students, that's a long, that's a lot of usage. And we've been, a good credit to our technology team, they've done a great job of maintaining these things for nine, 10 years. But again, thank you, Microsoft, saying, hey, 2007 is gonna be obsolete by January 2020. We're not being forced to go in this direction. And I think it's gonna help the teachers a lot with also having their own laptops. PD, they can move with it, bring it back, tie it in, and that's...
Okay, so I would like for you, and I'm sure my colleagues would agree, is to help the board with a plan to make sure that we are replacing laptops and Chromebooks and touchscreens on a regular enough basis that it doesn't hit in one budget and that we can't afford to do it.
Right, well, this is part of, these current 2,200 Chromebooks are part of a four-year plan. So 2015, we bought 2,400 Chromebooks. This is going back to that cycle, so now we'll get back to four years. Four years is actually not a bad cycle. Keep in mind that these Chromebooks cost around $250 over a three-year period. They lose value, and they break quite a bit. We have insurance for them, but there's a high rate of breakage. So, and my son is 14 years old, two things I always tell him. Put the helmet on your head when he rides his bike, and always put the Chromebook in his case. They don't want to do that. Many of these students like to carry it, drop it, drag it, right? So the younger you are, I'm generalizing here, the more breakage we have. And this is part of the recycling process. So just so you know, the 2,200 units we currently are requesting for are to replace 2,400 laptops that were purchased four years ago, and that is part of a lease cycle. So we do a lease purchase, we cycle that through. And the benefit of that is also, we'll take part of the inventory that we have at the high school and bring it down to the elementary schools, who unfortunately have received older equipment over the years because it trickles down, and that helps support, again, the ongoing breakage in age of those Chromebooks.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Calavano, in page eight of the budget presentation, the revenue page, where you break out Fund 10, Fund 20, Fund 40. I'm concerned that after tonight's vote, we won't really have anything left. Capital reserve, bank cap, in case there's an emergency, the roof falls in. I know last year, we used everything except for the $2 we just brought forward. It's, I don't really want to do that. I want to at least leave something in reserve.
So what we started to do is, if you call past years, we would put $2.5 million into surplus. We're trying to wean ourselves off of the budget of surplus each year. So our goal is to reduce it by $250,000 each year. And hopefully, that'll get us back to where we should be with enough reserve that we will feel comfortable at night, that we can go to sleep.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we get those calls and those text messages from the superintendent ever so often about a water main break or something that needs to get fixed, and it's tough to go scrambling. That's all I have for now, Mr. President.
Thank you. First, thanks to Ms. DeMendez and Mr. Calavano and all your team working on this, and my colleagues. We've spent some time in the trenches. And for the new folks, I'm sure this has been lots of fun. First, I think it's appropriate to highlight the gains that we've had. Because at the end of the day, this is all about student achievement. That's number one, right? And, you know, to see that our investment is producing a higher graduation rate, going from 86.7 to 91.2, our college attendance rate going from about 78% to 85.6. And just seeing the increases that we are. I did have a question. How does that, the college attendance rate, and by the way, over the past two, three years, we've actually seen it go up about 20% over the three-year period. I'm pretty sure. It was, you know, significant gain. How does our four-year college participation rate, rather, acceptance rate factor in to the overall number? Because that's a combined number, a four-year and two-year.
It is. I can, I think I've sent that to you, but I can get out, I can break out the 2%, or, I'm sorry, I can't speak, the two-year college attendance rate from the four-year college attendance rate over the past three years.
And that's a attendance rate versus, well, yeah, they're accepted, and, okay, yeah. When can we also see, I know that we've improved in the number of top 20 and top 30 schools that our kids are attending. And I know that, you know, we won't know final numbers until, or final names and everything until after May 1st, probably, right? But look forward to seeing that as well, because I understand there've been a lot of improvements in that area. And to that, we really need to congratulate Mr. Moore, teachers at the high school, our supervisors and directors, who are doing absolutely amazing work in helping our kids to get to that next level. Couple of things. We've talked about social, emotional learning and restorative justice, and it's having, it has a budget impact. And it's something we all felt was very important to finally move ahead on. What are some of the areas where the spending will actually be for that?
It'll be on training. It will be on instructional materials. It will be on working with our students to really apprise them of the help and the partnerships that they can reach out to with our families. It will be in really working with our staff to engage them in meaningful dialogue around social and emotional learning and mind shifts, thinking about how students may come to class with trauma. And therefore, do we have the same conversation when we understand that trauma is in play? So I think a lot of it is educational, a lot of it is professional development and training and resource and materials and partnerships with our community to say, if the support that our students and our families need extends beyond what the public school can give, the conversation doesn't end with a period, right? It says then, but, here are the partnerships that we have, and here are the community linkages and how we can reach out and help you really support your family.
And we can potentially use the community, some of the community relationships, maybe to explore mindfulness as part of the overall mix.
And we have received...
And a study that's being done, too, I know.
We've received overwhelming support from our parents and our community members to, one, offer the professional development and training. We have a lot of professionals in our parent body and school community that are offering their services, offering to partner with us to provide professional development and/or training and/or facilitate some of these conversations. So I think, again, the partnerships are critical. This is a community issue, right? It's a community. We are all going to come together on this one. And that includes restorative justice.
Okay. And something, well, I don't want to add something more to the budget. I want to revisit for the next cycle. Nurses, because every year, we end up with a presentation that indicates that we are probably down at least one nurse for the district, and we're shuffling back and forth between high school coverage for a couple thousand students and the nurses having to go on trips and do other stuff. So if we could revisit that, that'd be good.
That is true.
I want to piggyback on something Ms. Mordecai said. I do also have a concern about, while we need to provide more instructional materials for teachers, teachers have to have those tools. I get that. I also want to make sure we're looking at how well we're actually executing programs. Back in January, I brought up an issue regarding the Readers-Writers Workshop for ELA, for English Language Arts in seventh and eighth grade. And what I've found from talking to parents is, it is an issue at both Roosevelt and Liberty. And it's not an individual teacher issue. It's something that's systemic, where the kids simply aren't reading enough books. For those who don't know, the Readers-Writers Workshop is supposed to include, you have a guided reading book for the entire class, you have the book clubs, which at Edison actually started very early in first or second quarter. So a kid going through that at Edison ended up by the end of the year having read anywhere from five to eight books, not including their own, the individual reading. And right now, there's a lot of kids, most of the book clubs haven't started yet, won't start till third or even fourth quarter, fourth quarter in case of my daughter. And so a lot of kids have only read outside of their independent reading, one book, maybe two. And the whole purpose of the program is to get kids reading significantly more, as well as enjoying reading, as well as analyzing text. But the reading more lends to the fluency and comprehension part. And so we need to make sure that, just using this as an example, that we're really properly executing on a consistent basis.
Sure. Ms. Venesiano, can you provide some clarity to the ELA program in grades seven and eight, specifically around Readers-Writers Workshop and or not, and the reading materials?
So when I came to the district four years ago, I was under the impression that there was a Readers-Writers Workshop going on at the middle school. But in, there were pieces of the workshop being implemented, but not a Readers-Writers Workshop as we see in the elementary, due for a couple of things. Number one, for a true balanced literacy workshop, it is recommended to have 90 minutes. And that is not the case at the middle schools, where we have about 53 minutes. At the time, Edison had a longer block, but they have now since moved to the same block as 53 minutes as Roosevelt and Liberty. Number two, at the elementary, balanced literacy is based on data, where our teachers at the elementary school are assessing students based on their Fanta-Suppanal, and then they use the data of the student reading level to inform instruction, either their instructional or their independent level. With the current, and therefore, and they have a smaller amount of students, which they can work through the assessment quicker. At the middle school, students, teachers have currently four to five sections of students, over 100 students. So to do that, and in the amount of time of the 53 minutes, therefore, they are, if that were to happen, we would be assessing students constantly and not necessarily being able to address their needs based on their assessment. And so what I had discovered, along with the teachers, is we were doing pieces of the workshop model. And very much so was conferencing. And at the time, the reading was solely dependent upon independent reading. So teachers would be modeling, they would be modeling... reading. So teachers would be modeling, they would be modeling and using close reading, and then the, we would be workshopping, where then the students would be finding or addressing that skill within their independent reading. And then as a teacher, depending upon where that student was, you might have one student, if the mini lesson and skill was on theme, if a student was in their independent reading book on page three, but another student was on page 300, the theme of the book is very different, and one student would be further, being able to further to analyze the theme as opposed to the student early on in the book. And also, if that teacher wasn't knowledgeable of all of those independent reading books, they really could not assess. So therefore, with a team of teachers, we revised the curriculum to ensure that, number one, the current curriculum was moved from a collection of lessons that, when we looked at the curriculum, spanned over 20 weeks, whereas, you will see that a school year is 40 weeks. So we wanted to make sure our teachers had ample curriculum to cover the year. Also, that was shortly after, a few years after, students, teachers moved from reading, the reading class and the writing class. And so teachers really wanted help in that curriculum of how do we teach reading and writing balanced in a course. So now we read, and then we write in response to reading. So, do I think that the true Readers' Writers Workshop can work within our current middle school schedule? I don't think we could serve it the way the elementary school does it. Are there pieces that we can certainly, and that we still certainly have within our courses? Yes. And right now, as we talked about in January, we have a K-12 ELA Evaluation Committee, and we have been evaluating our instructional materials. We have evaluated our curriculum units. We have done an audit of our texts for diversity, and we looked at diversity through a diverse lens. So we're looking at gender, we're looking at race, we're looking at copyright, to make sure that we are providing a breadth of reading material. And we also are charged by the standards of reading literature as well as informational. And what we are trying to do in the seventh and eighth grade, because, as you said, the Edison was truly a model in regards to book club, we have-
Absolutely.
Yes, it was, absolutely, and it still is. And so, the Edison Book Club model was kind of brought to the seventh and eighth grade, and so, we are building that. The Edison happened over time. So at the, when I came here, we started, I think the students had selections of about four books. And so, we have been building that over time. And so now, we're at a place where I want to, and work with the teachers, to take that book club unit, and it can run throughout the year in parallel with the other instructional units. Do I think that we can add text? Absolutely. And that is one of the things that we are analyzing with our ELA committee, is, do we read enough? If so, what should be we adding? Is our sequence appropriate? Should we be shuffling around units so we can make more of a balance between literature and informational? So it is a work in progress. And so, we're working with the committee, and we'll be making recommendations at the end of the year.
Not to beat it to death. Thank you very much for the answer, but not to beat it to death, but two things, since I'm not going to be on the committee. If we could just get guided reading, where they share that one book, maybe one per semester, as well as the book clubs, where you have five different, the teachers teaching the same book at like five different levels in the class, and get that going earlier, because they're just not-
So, just to clarify, guided reading is based on student reading level, which is informed by Fanta's and Penel. And so, like I explained, we don't do that at the middle school because of the time.
Right, you don't do that at the elementary school.
So guided reading takes place in the middle school, and it's also recommended that, at a certain reading level, guided reading stops. So how we kind of work that within the middle school is through the book club, where there are common themes, or whether it's just choice, where students can choose their own novels, or they are, they work with the teachers on a novel that's appropriate for them at the time, and they work with their peers, and they have true discussions. And like I said, we really are looking to expand that, so it runs parallel, much like the Edison model throughout the year while the other instructional units are going on.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Math. I understand that, well, first of all, where are we piloting the math six, eight programs before we make a decision?
In grades six to eight.
No, but I mean, when you pilot somebody, you, something, you normally either do it at one school, or you do it at selective classes within each school. You don't normally do it, roll it out, do it completely in all the, in all the schools. So I just wanted to know how we're piloting it?
I don't have my notes on me, but the math programs are being piloted at all three schools.
Really?
Yes. They worked with the committee members. Committee members are piloting along with colleagues in their buildings that are not necessarily on the committee, but the committee members have been keeping them abreast. And so, it is across Edison, Liberty, and Roosevelt.
And because we're in a cycle for fifth, for K-5, we'll do that next. But, I don't know, and maybe this will be in a later committee presentation, but there was an issue with articulation going from K-5 to six to eight, and getting algebra concepts in much earlier. So I don't know how that'll be addressed. But are we going to have a presentation on that in May?
Yes, and then you also received a handout that answers those questions. That was sent earlier, I believe, yesterday. And we are piloting by all teachers at all three middle schools. All teachers and students have been provided with textbooks, workbooks, and additional needed resources. Grade six and seven are piloting a unit from each program, while grade eight is combining a unit for both programs. The piloting period for grade six and seven is about a month for each program, and grade eight piloting for one month for both programs. And again, those recommendations will come in May.
Thank you. I'll go back and look through them myself. For the academic support you're providing for six to eight, the three academic support teachers, and I'm glad to hear, because we have that support for K-5, could you tell, talk a little bit about what, how that support is delivered?
Sure. So we're going to have to design academic support, and what that will look like in grade six through eight. So that would begin by including an identification process for the students, considering the tiered interventions that we would put in place. They would be probably married to some of the things that we currently are doing, like RTI and/or Orton-Gillingham for students who are eligible, and Level Literacy for students who are eligible, and then straight academic support. So a student may be struggling in a class, and then that student would be identified, and then we would have different tiered levels of support for that student to accompany their work in the class. That does not have to be a pull-out, it may be a push-in, it could be a variety, a combination of. That would be a matter of pulling a team together to begin to design it, should the board approve moving in that direction. But the support is needed, the principals have all requested it, this is the second year that they're requesting it, we have parents requesting it, we have students saying they need the support. So this is all around a need.
Thank you. Glad to hear about the expanded summer institutes. You know, I've been battling for that for a little while. So it's going to be an opportunity to advance-
Correct.
-in a subject than not just. It's going to be a great focus on math, because I know it's been one of the popular areas.
We can check.
Okay, that'd be good to know. Let's see. Crisis prevention intervention training, that sounds great. What's that going to entail, and why weren't our folks already getting that?
Sure. Our Director of Special Services can answer that, Kristin Gogarty?
The Crisis Prevention Intervention Training is CPI. That is the restraint training. So we have a current facilitator in the district, we have staff that are already trained. So this would entail retraining the staff members, as well as identifying new staff members to be trained.
Okay. All right. For the Chromebooks, you know, I'm glad we're finally getting the laptops for our teachers. And I understand that Chromebooks have to be replaced, or should be replaced every four to five years. When we first rolled out the Chromebook in the original plan, this goes to where curriculum meets budget. The plan was that we were also going to, while we're living in the Google ecosystem, that we were also going to be teaching Microsoft through the use of licensing Microsoft 365, which is browser-based. And why? Because while we live in this Google ecosystem, Microsoft, particularly, and Microsoft Excel for math, science, business, finance, accounting, psychology, sociology, at the college level, and preparing our kids for college, the majority of colleges, if not all colleges in the US, are utilizing Microsoft Office, and particularly Microsoft Excel, for their statistics, data analysis, et cetera. And what I've found is that, even talking to our valedictorian, who was IMS, AP in honors math and science, took statistics, never had it. Our, I believe, our student representatives, did you ever have Microsoft Office and Excel? No. So, and I've talked to a billion kids and parents. And so, what I'm saying is, in preparing kids for college and career, as that's also heavy saturation in the business community, you know, what are we doing, how are we addressing that? Where did that drop off the list?
So, I do not recall making the, when we launched the Chromebook initiative, one of the rationales for, aside from cost and ease of deployment and for testing purposes, was also that Google came with a full suite.
Yeah.
That was a collaborative tool that facilitated real-time interaction and collaboration.
Right.
Social constructivist kind of said it, for lack of better words.
Yeah.
Office at the time didn't even have that. You would log in, post something, someone had to log in. So, the whole argument at the time was Chromebooks were an ecosystem that go with Google. So that was what it came with. We did have a conversation way back about, that it was already in the curriculum. The business department actually had grade six to 12, specific course that every single student went through for Office and different applications. So they have since, I believe, taught both. But I, we certainly don't have, I wouldn't put in place a two, a full operating system like Office 365 and Google, aside from a challenge to manage both of them. The original presentation, from what I recall, was, we have Chromebooks, they're easy to manage, they're easy to contain, they're used for testing as well, with the TestNav app, and they're also something we can track easily. And more importantly, there's this full suite of collaborative tools, very similar to Office, that may not have been exactly the same, but very easily transferable. As a matter of fact, I think one could argue that, and this question has been raised for a number of years, is, what can you learn in Office you can't learn in Google? Up to a certain age, there's not much of a difference. The functions are the same, some functions same. So, the rest of the piece is probably curriculum issue that's been addressed, and maybe Nancy Mullen can provide that.
Okay. I'll have to disagree with you. I've actually rolled out Chromebooks for an Office, and we still ended up needing, for certain things, to utilize Microsoft Office, which has, you know, the most penetration of any Office productivity software globally.
But, but, you're right.
And the thing is, they're not exactly the same, especially when it comes to the Excel program. So we'll come back to this, I'm not going to take any more time with it, because it sounds like it's a curriculum issue, which would then have technology ramifications, rather than being a technology issue that has curriculum ramifications. Because we should solve it at this end first. But most kids are not getting it, and it is a little bit of a culture shock when they try to make the transition in college, or if they go to do, to intern at an Office. Thank you. Really quick. Oh, I forgot to ask, what do we do with the, do we have a way to monetize the thousands of Chromebooks that we get rid of?
We actually haven't gotten rid of any Chromebooks, because we're trying to keep as many as possible as many of these break. So, in terms of monetizing, they cost about $225 to $50. Every year, they lose value, and we pretty much use them as much as we can, they're pretty much broken. And in some cases, if they're broken, we use some parts. We will try to use any part we can to sort of cannibalize for other units that may be broken but repairable. So, by the time we were to sell them, just the amount of time was spent to sell it, probably not cost us that.
Okay. Last question. When it comes to capital projects, on page 29, you know, it was a shock, it's an eight to nine million dollar shock, but it was particularly a shock to find out that we had HVAC systems, that some of which were darn near a century old. We had stuff that was, a lot of systems that were over 20 years old, and 30 and 40 years old. How did we end up in a situation, and I remember we talked about it briefly, when we rolled out ESIP, and then decided to take it out of ESIP, but shouldn't this be part of an annual checklist for maintenance, repair, and capital projects, rather than a shocker in 2018, 2019?
I'll look back years ago to see if it was included in Mr. Ziggy's overall request. He got to a point where, you know, he would submit multi-requests, and he would be lucky to get $100,000, $200,000. So he stopped submitting the big list. Let me just go back and let me find out how far back he actually had them listed.
Because the other thing, to that point, with the Washington wall, this is the third year that this $500,000 wall has been on the list. So perhaps we should think about, I believe Ms. Mordecai's brought this up before as well, perhaps we should think about, because Mr. Ziggy has a list that can go on, you know, ad infinitum, that we should have a five-year plan. So what we can't fix this year, we already know is going to be out, be on next year's budget, or the year after. But we're seeing same things pop up again and again, as well as these new eight, nine million dollar surprises.
Not a problem.
Mr. Robertson?
Please do.
We used to allot Mr. Ziggy $2.5 million every year for building improvements. Once we did ESIP, ESIP took, ESIP actually helped us repair, make a lot of repairs within his overall, I think, $49 million budget. So instead of giving him $2.5 million every year as an allotment, we started allotting him $500,000, $300,000, and it kept going down. Because under the ESIP, which is Energy Savings Improvement Program, we fixed quite a bit. So that's why his budget went down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Marklecker?
So I just want to echo my peers on thanking Ms. Mendez, Mr. Calavano, and your staff for putting this together. It's not a small feat. A lot goes into it, a lot of time, a lot of effort. I feel like a lot of my questions have already been answered, so I'm not going to add any questions to you right now. A lot of them have been answered either offline or during the course of our workshops. So I just want to remind everyone, though, that our duty is to ensure our students are educated, that they're safe. We also have a duty to our taxpayers in the community, as well as to our employees and faculty, and ensuring that our decisions are fair and respectful to the entire staff. So, just keeping that in mind as we go through the preliminary budget, and keeping in mind that this is a preliminary budget, and just being mindful of that for now.
Ms. Anderson, you guys have anything?
We had a few questions on transportation and water. So, we were just wondering, since, we wanted to know about how much money was spent actually paying for the bottled water, and whether that could have been used towards actually fixing the water problem. And I didn't, I didn't mean to sound like shady or anything, but, yeah, that was water. And then, Cecina has transportation.
So I have like a series of questions, and they're all of a common theme. But first, I want to thank you for, like, for taking our suggestions and concerns into consideration for listening to us. And we were pleased to see, we were really happy to see that geomapping, Zee passes, and smart apps were in the budget, and that's what we were asking for over and over, so I appreciate that. I have a few questions about the different, or the consolidated bus routes, and the consolidated after-school bus route times at the high school. So my first question is, does the consolidation of the bus routes, or as you mentioned, the single, double, triple bus routes, does that take into consideration potential for the overcrowding of morning bus routes and afternoon bus routes? And we know that morning bus routes are, oh, afternoon bus routes aren't so much an issue because of after-school activities. But morning, overcrowding was a main issue for down-the-hill kids, as we call them, or down-the-hill neighborhoods. Yeah, so that's mostly like Hazel and Washington. And those are neighborhoods with high density of students, that sometimes are riding non-assigned buses because their own buses and their own bus routes were too crowded. And so, going off of that, I want to ask what regions of West Orange were single routes, were single routes generally found, or were they generally spread, or were they generally spread out? For the after-school bus changes, I know that as a winter athlete myself, that after-school buses, especially the, we used to have, as you said, the six o'clock, seven o'clock, those were pushed earlier because of earlier sundown, and it was not safe to have students out in the streets that late. Does that change, will those times change for the winter season? And seeing that the 3:30 and 4:30 buses are now consolidated to 3:45, which is another overcrowding issue for me, because I know that, especially, I live in the St. Claude area, so our St. Claude Gregory bus is especially overcrowded. It's like a fight to get on the bus, and then anyone left over has to go on an overflow bus. Does that, how is that going to, are we going to provide overflow bussing? Because that's an actual issue, that sometimes students have to stand until 4:30 to go to the next bus. And my last question is about, back to the double, triple route. So I'm happy that that was looked into, and we can make efficiencies. But if I understood correctly, if I heard correctly, you mentioned a five to 10-minute cushion time required between classes in order to create an efficient double, triple route. Is this going to affect the start times of middle school, elementary schools, or did I misunderstand? That's about it.
Okay. I'm looking forward to the day that you're a part of our staff. So, the bottled water, absolutely, right? But I think we didn't know that we had the problem, right? So I think this is what was alluded to earlier. We have emergencies, we have things that come up throughout a year that are unexpected, and that- and that do end up incurring a cost for the district. So, right now, we're going through all of the assessments with Omega, and the different plumbers, and companies that are in our district, really assessing what our true needs are, so that we are not in these stop-gap measures to fix it with a Band-Aid, but instead develop a long-range plan that would help us really address the problem at the root. With regard to the bus routes, so, the consolidation of bus routes for the high schools' after-school routes is moving from four to three. What happens is that we would have to send new bus drivers out for the different routes, which is at one cost, versus sending, instead of three buses, five routes, five buses, which is a different cost. So, if we have overcrowding, then yes, we could send out, instead of three buses, we could send out five buses. But adding a route by itself is what is costly, right? Do you understand the difference, right? So then, yes, we're going to look at the average number of students that are taking the buses after school. We will be able to add the buses based on student need, et cetera. With regard to the winter season, we can take a look at that, absolutely. You can help us inform that decision. And with regard to start times, the five-minute difference would then mean potentially starting a set of schools five minutes later, right? So that we can spread out the time that it would take to get from the high school to the elementary school, to the middle school. Because by adding that five-minute cushion, then we could potentially have the double and the triple routes, instead of single routes. Because right now, this is a, goes to a point that you've been bringing up over the past few board meetings, is that that 3:30 bus is always late, right? It's always late, because it's impossible, physically impossible, for the bus to get from the elementary school back to the high school for the late bus, or wherever it's coming from, because those times are too closely set together. All right? So, with that said, I know we're meeting, so that we could look at your proposals of delaying the high school start times. We really would have to look, and you'll see all of the data that we have, have to look at those routes yourselves. And so then, when you come to that meeting, bring these data, and then we can take a look at that all together, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. For myself, I just wanted to go ahead and like the others, thank everyone who worked on this, yourself, Mr. Calavano, the entire staff, everyone who stayed to answer all these questions. It's very thorough. I think just the one question I had, if we happen to know, is, how long ago did we originally purchase Connected Math in the middle schools, approximately, if we don't know for sure? And just curious, how long after we bought it did it start to become evident that it maybe wasn't the right choice?
I don't know, that predates, I think, most of us, so I'm going to find out.
Years ago, because when I first came on the board in 2010, we had what was called the Math Wars. And, yeah, many parents across New Jersey joined the Math Wars to fight actually everyday math, which we eventually purchased, and I was a no vote back then, so I distinctly remember that. I don't know if Mrs. Brill is here, but Mrs. Brill and I were two of the members of the Math Wars, because we did not like everyday math. We felt it was scaffolding. We preferred Singapore Math, and Math, which is now Math in Focus.
So, that would speak to the poor rumor that we replace our programs every two years, because we don't. If Connected Math is seven to eight years, and we know that the everyday math, it's at the end of its license, which is a minimum of five years, then here we are.
Yeah, but we updated, we bought the next level of the everyday math, and then the next little, level of Connected Math, three.
So, when we do that, the revisions or the updates, it's usually the new copyright, so that we could have the more recent text. So, that is, again, just an update. It's not a new program, it's not bringing something new in. Sometimes it's e-text, making sure that we have those resources, or access to the virtual resources as well. And with our budgeting process, we have to project out. So, right after we are adopting a program, we're already in motion to say, now we have to think about, four years from now, because as you see from this process, it took us three years just to assess, to committee, pilot, and then to recommend. It takes three years. And so, as we continue to refine our practice of diligent forecasting and planning for the future, you'll see that, you'll see things rolling out on a three-year plan.
Great. All right. At this time, we'll take questions from, yes.
One more quick one.
Almost.
One more quick one. Grant writing.
No.
No? Okay, we'll have to do that.
All right. At this time, public comment on any agenda item. Come on up to the microphone, let us know your name and address. You'll have three minutes on the clock. Yes, that includes the budget. You'll notice there's a clipboard on that little side table there. If you ask a question that you think you need some more response from, put your information and your topic on that, and Ms. Mendez will be able to get back to you, in case we're not able to answer you tonight.
Susan McAbby, Two Mountain Way. I came to speak about how lovely the librarians are, and I don't know that that's necessary. However, they are lovely, and I wanted to say about them that, a lot of people think of librarians as just the person who checks in and out books. But I, my experience with the libraries at our schools is that they're also doing a lot of education. I know that they bring in lesson plans, they, in the elementary school, they do a lesson like for Black History Month. Each week, they had a specific history lesson that was, or a lesson about the history of black, of black people, or a particular person that they talk about. They'd often talk about black women in science, and that kind of thing. So, they choose things that are relevant to the school, and they use that as really a huge educational opportunity, to bring in diversity, and to bring in other ideas and concepts that I find amazing and interesting. I know at Gregory, the PTA bought a 3D printer, and once that got in and got installed, the STEM opportunities increased, and the librarians were the ones that were bringing that to the students, and making sure that they got the opportunity to do these awesome STEM activities. And I know Ms. Matts also does a lot of education for safety on the Internet, and how to use some of the computer stuff, which is awesome. I wanted to address two other little things, since I'm here. One is when you're looking at the supports for reading, I was wondering if you could look at getting a learning ally again. We used to have a grant for it. And for those of you that don't know, for kids that have a real problem reading, just the text, it reads books to them at their grade level, so that you can have the reading comprehension part be separate from the learning how to read part. About the six through eight math, I was on the committee last year and this year. The original, from what the teacher said last year, the original CMT, whatever it was, was okay. And then when we upgraded it to the new one, apparently that wasn't as ready for prime time as the publisher told us. So, that's really the one that didn't seem to meet the IMAT. And it also was extremely text-heavy, so there was a lot of more-than-usual word problems, like, you know, if you look through the workbook, it would be like three paragraphs of writing, and then one example, it just was a bit much. So, that's, I think that it's definitely needing to be replaced. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Joy Burnett, 63 Pelot Place, also a teacher at Gregory School. I would just like to advocate for elementary teachers on the whole pushing time for transportation. We are now practically leaving our buildings at four o'clock, which ends up being a quality of life issue for the teachers. I live in town, but all my kids are athletes. I'm killing myself in town, trying to get to a four o'clock game, because I'm getting out of school at 3:53. If we're pushing even further, I don't know who you're trying to move, but we got moved already, so much later. And for people who don't live in town, who have children who are in activities 20 minutes away, a half hour away, traffic picks up after four o'clock, because everybody's out of school. And so, there are teachers who will have a horrible time just trying to get home and get to their own families, and their own children's events, if we keep pushing the elementary time, even if we get out later than anybody in the area already. So, if we're talking about changing times, five minutes, 10 minutes, please don't do it to us again, because we just, we can't give the time anymore. Like I said, it's a quality of life issue for us. And it's really, you know, it's not fair as it is that we are getting out so late. As I said, like, people who, teachers I know in other districts, neighboring districts, are like, get out, get out of school. At what time? Like, you know, I'm already at home with my family. So, please, keep that in, keep that in mind, and take that under consideration. And as far as everyday math, I love it. I've been teaching it since, you know, since we've had it, and I think the kids do very well with it in the elementary. Didn't like Connected Math when my daughter got to middle school, but I do like everyday math, just as a plug for, for the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Jacqueline Hendy, 134 Walker Road. Excuse my notes and crayon, my phone was dying. These are sort of off the cuff, and excuse me also if some of these could be easily researched. I just want a little bit of clarification on a few things, specifically the 12 million plus allocated for special services. I'm assuming that this includes renting the pre-K from the church, and I'm wondering how much that's costing us per year, and if there's an exit strategy in place, so that we can stop paying a church to house our pre-K. I'm also wondering if it covers some of the deficits found in the recent audit, what is the plan for addressing our deficiencies, and what part of that budget is going to be allocated toward addressing those deficiencies. Also, I wanted to make sure, we hear a lot of talking about diversity, and part of that diversity is our neurodiverse community. And I want to make sure that our teachers, some of them are intuitively sensitive and able to deal with the challenges of educating special-needs children, and some of them are not. So, what kind of training are we going to have into, and place in de-escalation in recognizing when a child is on the spectrum? I want everyone to know, from the gym teacher, to the librarian, to the lunch aid, everyone should be trained on how to de-escalate that situation. I'm also hearing that there's going to be a reduction in dropping, when a child graduates out of services. That concerns me, because I want to make sure we're not incentivizing dropping essential services, because it's, we need to make room in the budget. And that kind of rings a bell, when my son was in kindergarten, I felt like it took a very long time to get him the help that he needed, and I'm wondering if that's because it wasn't in the budget. And then last, I heard Ms. Gogarty mention something called CPI. What, how is that going to be implemented? I mean, we need more information. Specifically, is there going to be a third-party oversight committee to look, to account for abuse? Some of these children are going to be non-verbal. My child is verbal, but some of them are not going to be able to. So, I want to make sure that there's a third-party committee oversight, if we're going to be implementing something called CPI, which I'm not really a fan of. And I want to make sure that this third party is advocating on behalf of the students, and not advocating on behalf of the budget and the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My first comments to the acting superintendent. These are not contributions. This is confiscatory. You pay your taxes, or you lose your home. You pay your income taxes, or you go to jail. Please don't call them contributions. It's offensive. Inflation is low, enrollment is flat or declining, state aid is way up, and the tax levy goes up again. Doesn't add up. You're spending more per pupil than every other K to 12 suburban district in the county. You're spending more than the state average. The taxes in West Orange are confiscatory. We have a population in this town, some of whom can't stay in their houses. When you incrementally raise this, there are people who are going to lose their houses. Maybe a small number, but there's some. You're part of a process of pushing people out. The larger group, myself included, and probably the vast bulk of these people in the room, wonder if they can stay here in retirement. You're part of the process of pushing people out, so they can't stay here and watch their grandchildren grow. You're not budgeting well. You're paying a broker to buy health insurance. It's stupid. You're giving Brown and Brown fees. Our neighbors in Livingston have very good healthcare for their employees, they pay less, they're in the state plan. Why do you want to pay Brown and Brown extra fees? I can't understand it. You have to make choices. Courtesy's busing is a discourtesy to the taxpayer. We don't even need late buses. If a child wishes to stay after school for extracurricular activity, that's fine. It's absolutely acceptable for the taxpayers to pay for coaches, extracurricular activities, and education. In fact, it's our duty as taxpayers. But the extra of a free bus home? No, that should be on the family's dime, not the taxpayers' dime. So, I really think you have to reconsider things here. We should be known as a great place to live, and a great place with good schools. We should not be known as a place that's just known for really high taxes, which is our reputation around the state, and that's wrong.
Robin Iserlis, 22 Yale Terrace, West Orange cares about schools. Thanks, everyone, for all your hard work on the budget. I have a few comments and questions. Mr. Santiago, some of them may be directed towards you. Well, I support the idea for our public schools to provide all children with, in the district, with technology to help them succeed. I was not a fan as to how the one-to-one Chromebook was implemented, the program, with no pilot at all, and all at once, grade six through 12. So, now in its second year, I have a few questions before we continue to finance this program. And I've had, I have actually asked these questions here before. One, what is the current cost for the one-to-one, six to 12 Chromebook program, including purchasing, repairing, insurance, et cetera? Number two, have we evaluated this program at all? And if so, can you make that evaluation available to the public? Number three, have we gathered feedback from teachers, staff, parents, and even students, maybe in high school, as to what is working well and what isn't? If so, can we make that data available to the public? Number four, in what ways have teachers and staff been supported to develop academically sound ways to integrate the Chromebook into instruction? And has the district received feedback from teachers and staff on this support and development? Number five, have we considered the enormous research that demonstrates that too much screen time reduces, rather than enhances, learning, especially for our younger students? And lastly, while I appreciate that the budget discussion, there's a lot to talk about and a lot to ask, I would like the members of the Board of Ed to consider that on agenda items, Board of Ed members be limited to five minutes for their responses moving forward. Public questions tonight started at 10 o'clock PM. This is undemocratic. Thank you.
Beverly Tyndall, West Orange High School Library. I would simply like to take a few minutes to remind everyone how valuable our library spaces, our library programs, and especially our certified library media specialists are. In fact, I have presented in international and state conferences, where I tout that, how we are supported here by our administration. I would publicly like to acknowledge that we are very lucky to have a supervisor who steadfastly advocates for us. Nancy Mullen is a formidable, hard-working warrior, who understands the value of what we do here, and I personally thank her. Here in West Orange High School, we have Hayden Moore, who is also a library lover and an advocate. In fact, you who are in charge of the management of finances in this district should know that you absolutely get the biggest bang for your buck with your librarians. Here's a quick job description. We are technology specialists, we are literature experts, we are Makerspace mavens, we are curriculum supporters, we collaborate with students, teachers, administrators, parents, and community members. We are architects of our spaces. We are curators, administrators of a lot of district dollars. We are supporters of building, district, and community initiatives. In fact, we see in effect the lives of every kid in our schools in one way or another. Every library in this district has its own personality, and I know how hard my colleagues work, because I have been at all three levels at some point in my career, in my very long career in West Orange schools. But let me give you a glimpse of just the last few weeks in West Orange High School Library. We hosted not one, but two Holocaust survivors. We hosted a We hosted a multicultural, diverse, socially diverse young adult author. We taught and supported the creation of We Videographic Novel Book Trailers. We curated and helped 40 students find credible resources for a U.S. slavery research project. We taught proper MLA citation. We taught 3D printing classes to AB, AP Environmental Science and Chemistry classes. We designed and printed molecule models and mathematically accurate functioning wind turbines. We traveled with early childhood classes to Kelly and Redwood Schools, collaborating with reading specialists there to celebrate Read Across America. We promoted literacy by running a March Madness book bracket competition. We have both student and faculty book clubs. We process new books and we weeded older, unsuitable books. In our host of Makerspace activities, we've run everything from augmented reality, leather works, fiber arts. We also helped make butterflies with support at the art department for the special ed prom. It's not your grandma's library, for sure. Oh, yeah, and we hosted Governor Murphy. Let me say, we all have come to understand the Rice. I'm going to run out of time. My last one was the kicker. Thank you.
Pass it off. Thank you.
Lisa Tuzo, 15 Carter Road, also a library media specialist. I would like to take, thank the Board of Ed for showing their desire to support and maintain the library media program in our district. I was given a copy of, a letter from the president of the New Jersey Association of School Librarians, which outlines that the West Orange School Librarians continue to trick, direct, I apologize. The West Orange School Librarians contribute directly to many of the school district initiatives, including one of its one, one-to-one program. Enhance STEAM and STEM integration, wellness priorities. We support English language learners. In an effort toward a comprehensive curriculum, assessment, and professional development structure, we build a continuum of literacies that enable students to engage in meaningful inquiry as learners, as workers, and as members of their community. And we are deeply committed to our, to enhancing resources and experiences for the opportunities for West Orange students at all grade levels. I would also like to thank the American Library Association, the American, American Association of School Librarians, the New Jersey Association of School Librarians, the New Jersey Library Association, and the West Orange Public Library for their advocacy and showing the value of a well-maintained, strong program for our students. Thank you.
Hi there. Justin Goldsman, 14 Moran Road, Chair of Our Revolution Essex County. So I have four just quick points of conversation that I wanted to bring up, and thank you again for your time tonight. As someone who was a former member of Cornell University's Professional Development and Assessment and Research Team, I would strongly urge that you do not in-source professional development as it tends to create imbalances and, you know, uncertainties with being able to question those, giving those presentations, as well as creating difficult conversations if one of those presentations does go awry. I know it's cost-benefit analysis is to do it internally, but those are real ramifications that tend to arise. The second is, I had the honor to go to Secretary Way's census meeting in Patterson last week. And she, as well as her commission, were very adamant that we are going to need help from school districts, especially because the populations that are most hard to count for the census are zero to five. And we know that a lot of times, parents aren't aware of these things. So Patterson is doing a really good job at a local level of trying to help with the census. As we know, we botched the census the last time it came around. We lost millions in state funding, and we lost a congressional seat. So I know it's a year out, but I urge you to start thinking about that now. And then, one of the things is, I know we talked about recycling these old laptops and whatnot, and might not be worth that much money. Even if it's worth $5,000 to $10,000, I'm sure that will go a long way, as we clearly see. So I don't accept that notion that, oh, it's not worth the time. I really think it would be. And then my fourth conversation, and probably what I think is the most important, is that, you know, I've had the opportunity this week to meet with Congresswoman Sherrill, Congressman Payne, the governor, as well as all three of our legislators, all of whom have a direct focus on the environment. We keep talking about levying property taxes, but I do pose the question that if we don't do anything as a municipality, we're not going to be there to pay them for much longer anyway. So if we want to talk about lowering the budgets that our operating costs, you know, are based on, some solar panels would go a really long way. They would address some of the water quality issues that we're here having. California has over 2,000 schools already that are solar-based. 23% of schools in Nevada are. A study in Virginia, of all places, said that they're going to save 2.5 million over 20 years. I know that's a long time, but that's still a lot of money. And that's as the price of solar keeps going down. So I just urge us to consider all four of those things with a big focus on the environment and the census especially. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julie Matz. I'm the librarian at Gregory Elementary. And I'm here to speak on behalf of not just librarians, but teachers and students as entrepreneurs. Children that are doing things that they're doing on their own, that are not funded by the district, but in response to things that have happened in the district. So I want to tell you about a bulletin board that's on the outside of the Gregory Library. And it's titled, "Coming Soon to a Library Near You." And children have been making posters for the books that they are writing and that they are intending to publish. And they have. Here are some of the titles. Spikes of Fury, The Blackout, Potato the Pickle, The New Girl, Dinos in Space, La Chanca, and, my very favorite, Weirdo Wayne and the Prying Plot of the Precarious Policeman. These are all books that children have worked together with each other as authors and illustrators. And I would like to think that they're in response to the fact that we have a strong program in our district of bringing in authors. And we have a very author illustrators to come and meet with our children so that they are not only reading, but they are meeting authors and illustrators, which greatly influence them. And not just through the library, but also through the classroom, through social media, and also through our, through visits that we can do through technology. There are teachers that are bringing so many resources into the classroom that doesn't show up in the budget, but it makes a huge difference in the quality of education that our children get. So I don't want us to forget that. And I also want to thank you for including the library as one of the programs that are being continued. And I want to thank Mrs. McAbby and the other parents that are here from Gregory School for their continued support. Thank you.
Jeremiah Salinas, 7 Crystal Ave. I know we're talking a lot about money here, but in 2011, there was a thing that was called Chapter 78 that actually had districts and schoolteachers share their health benefits. It's the reform law of New Jersey public school sector. Brought a lot of welcome and relief to boards of education. For years, boards had to struggle with containing the escalating cost of variety of employee benefits or health coverage. It was supposed, it's supposed to be phased in. So we have some teachers now that are paying up to close to 35% of their health insurance premiums, right? So the Board of Ed has been actually saving money in that sense, not actually spending more money. So it's not like there's a golden parachute for teachers when it comes to health benefits cost. This year, as a matter of fact, our school district is going to receive an additional $1.3 million, correct? 1.6, okay. So that's in addition to the 3.5 that we received last year. So that's like a 13% increase, right? So we're about to get like $13 million from the state. My taxes have been going up every year since I moved into West Orange. And I know we're talking about like living in, or aging in place, right? And staying in West Orange. I really love the town. My family and my son and my, and my daughter have greatly benefited from the schools. But some things that I did not hear in the presentation for today was things that we spoke about in the past. Mental health support for teachers, for students, providing more counseling or guidance counselors at the elementary school level. When we talk about reducing non-tenure staff reductions, how are we attracting a diverse population of teachers? Every year, they're on the chopping block, right? Providing opportunities for professional development. We're talking about rolling out, what is it, 500 new laptops and new programs, but we have no professional development for teachers to be able to use the resources. So you can give me all the stuff, all the tools that I need, but if you don't show me how to use it, it's just going to become a useless tool. All right? There's really no real infrastructure upgrades either. We still have the trailers that we're still using. And the town continues to grow. Right? Town Council just approved the purchase of the golf course. And there's going to be more housing added in that area in addition to the housing that continues to be developed now. So we need to start figuring out where we're going to start putting a lot of these kids and the families that are going to be moving in. You talk about supporting diversity and culture, but I don't see that either in, in this presentation that we had before. There really isn't crisis prevention intervention training because you're cutting some professional development for teachers to even be able to go out, like substitute, or whatever it is. Or it was in the budget here, out-of-district professional development. So we have to be able to sustain all these programs, and I hope you take a look at it. Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Deb Rees. I know how to speak into a microphone, so I hope you can all hear me. I think it's very important. I'm here up here to speak on behalf of the librarians. They didn't get to finish their speech. And I'm speaking for Bev Tindall, and I want to finish what she had to say. Let me all say that I have come here to understand what the Rice Letter process means. And we understand that you are charged with the hard decisions that affect people's lives, and it's not an easy task. Please understand, it does feel a little different when an entire department gets them with absolutely no background explanation. And this is not the first time that it's happened. This happens time and time again. And I'm speaking extemporantly, parentlessly on regard with, with the librarians. They don't get enough time to, to sign them. They don't get enough time to look at them, and then they have to return them. This is not the first time that members of the library media department have received them. The last time I, meaning Bev Tindall, have received mine was at the very end of the day before spring break. This time, mine was on the keyboard when I came into the building. Really? She's been here, I've been here, 32 years. No one could look me in the eye and give it to me, perhaps couch with it, and I'm sorry. I'm not sure what this is about. We've been here time after time, hearing about the lack of teacher morale and the lack of common courtesy in our school system. Well, this kind of treatment really explains what's going on. Please consider what's going on when we're talking about the libraries and what the librarians do with regards to our school district. In closing, please remember that the libraries matter and so do the professionally certified people who administer them. Thank you, and the loss of even one affects everyone. Thank you.
Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. First, I would like just to come to speak on behalf of Gregory's librarian. That's where all four of my children are. And as a former school teacher and now a parent, the library is the heart of the school. And it's the center for the teachers and for the students. And whenever I walk into Gregory to get my kids early or to drop them off, I walk in and I see action. I see lots going on, and it's very exciting. So I'm so glad that you'll be willing to support our librarians and all the work that they do. And then I'm also really excited tonight to see the Allergy Awareness Committee on the agenda. That means a lot to me and all the allergy families of West Orange. I've been contacted by many families who have seen the coverage both on Tap and West Orange Cares About Schools and other social media sites about what's going on, that you guys are addressing this issue. And it means a lot to a lot of families. Some of them are here tonight. Many of them have written to me just about how important it is and how they would love to join and support this action. And then also, just a quick aside, last week, the Black History Month Sedexo Cooking Competition, it was an amazing night at Gregory, right? Like, so amazing. But I just want to share what it's like to be an allergy mom and to walk into the cafeteria and see a whole bunch of food that you didn't know was going to happen there, and smell the food and see everyone really excited about the food. And this is coming from a personal, like lover of food. But have your heart stop and the rug come out under you, wondering, what is this? What is the food? What am I smelling? Are there any allergens here? Real quick, where are my kids? What do I need to make sure they shouldn't touch anything? And I am so excited for the event. It was really well done. But I, I did ask parents there if there was any mention about allergens. And there was not a mention, at least from what I heard. So I think it's a great opportunity for Sedexo to take a lead in, in this competition with even one minute of addressing allergens in the beginning. Just maybe stating that these are some possible allergens that might be in the recipes. It was nice that the recipes were all on the tables, but they could have told anybody in the room that they could, you know, come meet the chefs and speak about the allergens. But it's just a great way to build awareness and to make that part of the conversation. I know that Sedexo handles our food, so that's an important partnership with them. So that's all. But it was an amazing event, and I'm really happy Piper won, and all the food looked amazing. Thank you.
Carol Rocky, 77 Oak Ridge Road, West Orange. I am here as a member of the New Jersey Association of School Librarians and the representative of Essex County, sorry, librarians. And I'm also a lifelong West Orange resident. I'm here to support the, um, school librarians in West Orange. I had a long speech, but I'm not going to give it tonight. I'm going to speak on a personal note. I raised three children in West Orange, and I'm educated in West Orange. I'm a media specialist at the Essex County Schools of Technology, Newark Tech. And I just wanted to say what a wonderful program West Orange has had my whole life. And how important the libraries were to my children and to my granddaughter up until third grade when they left West Orange. And I'm happy to see that you're going to continue the program. And I would like to, um, to agree with Mr. Robertson about the Chromebooks and the Microsoft. I think that, I believe, 365 is free for education for a very low price. And we're doing our students a disservice by just having them learn Google Chrome, the Google applications, because they don't learn to save things. And when they get out into the business world, they're lost. And when they get into college, they're lost. And it's a real problem. Thank you.
Hi, Christina Cucci, 6 Paula Court, Morristown. I am not a West Orange resident, although I used to live in West Orange. I'm here as the president of the New Jersey Association of School Librarians. My mom, my grandparents, they all lived in West Orange for over 40 years. And I lived here for a couple of years after college. I did my student teaching at Gregory School. So when I found out that the Rice notices went out to the media services last week, I felt compelled to be here. I really echo what you've heard already this evening. And I just wanted to zero in on the studies, the research that is out there. And I, it sounds like you do support the library program, so I'm, I'm really happy to hear that. But just really quick, the compendium research that I'm referring to, I think I sent this along yesterday in an email to the board. Numerous studies throughout the United States have demonstrated that students in schools with effective school library programs learn more, get better grades, and score higher on standardized tests than their peers in school with comparable resources. However, school library media specialists are more than statistics. They're more than data. They are staff and their students. A school library media specialist, it's the heart of the school. It's the hub of learning. School librarians not only create a learning space where students develop critical thinking, but they establish strong relationships with other teachers so that learning can extend beyond the classroom. Certified school library media specialist transforms learning. And as the NJZIL president, I would just urge you to continue to support school library programs staffed by certified school library media specialists as part of your instructional programs here at the West Orange Public Schools. Thank you.
Er, Schwartzbound, 10 Lakeview Drive. I'd like to comment on the proposed budget for the upcoming year. The board members and the administration have an obligation to provide the best education to our students. And the Board of Education also has an obligation to make sure that the spending is reasonable and fiscally responsible for all residents of West Orange. The proposed budget of $166 million is a $9 million increase over the last year. This represents a 6% increase in spending. We received between last year and this year approximately $5 million in increase in state aid. And if you calculate the increase that the staff would get, approximately 2.75%, as well as an increase in health benefits of approximately 8%. as an increase in health benefits of approximately 8% and 1 to 1.5% for the overall budget, there is enough money just in the increase in state aid to cover, to cover the increase in costs. But this budget includes a change in the ELA program and the math program. And these programs were recently changed. It seems that with a change in administration, there's a change in approach. I mean, I'm a very big advocate for change. However, we need to give current programs a chance to come to fruition and prove out. And not to mention the impact that it has on teachers and staff to constantly retrain for every new program. We currently have an interim superintendent and the board has commenced a new, a search process. So, is, can one conclude that if a new superintendent is chosen, that will potentially have another change in programs? So, I think we all need to slow down a little. The taxpayers of West Orange have had a tremendous negative impact due to the current tax laws. Real estate taxes and state income taxes are now limited to a total of $10,000. Increasing a Board of Ed budget above the rate of inflation will only cause more people to move out of our wonderful community. It seems that West Orange will become a community of senior citizens. It seems like every development, everything is, we only are building for senior citizens because we're afraid that new families aren't going to move in because they can't afford it. So, to close, the current, and one additional fact, the current budget does not address capital improvements that need to be done. The HVAC, the retaining wall, the water issues, as well as the cost overruns on the bubble. So I urge the board to honor your responsibility to all residents of West Orange and rein in the spending. Thank you.
Michaela Bennett, 35, Old Indian Road. I want to speak just briefly about item, agenda item 10A, 2A, and then H. Just briefly in general, not about anyone specifically. This board, you disrespect every educator in our district who went to school, student taught, graduated with a degree that permitted them to go out, obtain a certificate and teach in New Jersey. You disrespect every educator in this district who came by their jobs honestly when you permit the superintendent to recommend an external candidate for a job he never met the qualifications to apply for in the first place. The superintendent is well aware that she recommended an external candidate who lacked prerequisites for an internal posting despite having two internal candidates with superior experience and every one of you voted in favor of that appointment. You violated ethics rules, you violated the collective bargaining agreements with the three unions, and at least one of you participated in manufacturing the experience and supervising the candidate but didn't abstain from voting on his appointment. You'd think with everything at stake, you'd be a bit more reticent when nepotism, incestuous hiring, favoritism, and unscrupulous recommendations are made. But instead, it's business as usual, wink, nod, turn a blind eye, and ultimately erode the trust of the public and violate your core responsibilities and ethical obligations.
Laura Labb, 35, Cunningham Drive. I want to go back to the budget. I do realize, of course, this is a preliminary budget subject to hopefully a lot of revision. It's a fluid document, a work in progress. I got that, I sat there, I know. What I want to present to you, previous boards had the understanding and the luxury of knowing that you can deduct your federal and state taxes. With the SALT, we are now capped at $10,000, as you know. The average home in West Orange at $338,000. Their tax rate currently for this year is $14,836, nearly 50% higher than what you can deduct. Somebody had mentioned, maybe it was Erv, I don't really recall, and certainly Adam, that people are being taxed out of their home. You have the largest amount of state aid ever that we have received. However, the expenditures have not slowed down. The first thing Ken said that tonight was that you appointed or approved a search firm for the new superintendent for the search. There are proposed to be 13 initiatives to be supported, to be amended, to be purchased. And again, I think it was just Erv who had mentioned that whoever the new superintendent coming in, they're going to come in, they're going to do a look, see, I know Ms. Trig scales, you've been an administrator. Any new super comes in, they do an assessment for a year, then they make their changes and they engage. So please, I do know our staff for a number of years has been inundated with new programs, new programs, PD, this, that, the other thing, their heads are spinning. Slow it down, wait for the new permanent superintendent, be fair to the taxpayers, keep in mind the SALT has capped the ability to deduct. The other thing, just, Ms. Mendez, you had mentioned something about the special education bus runs, that there's an opportunity for the general ed bus to pick up the kid, but these are related services, these are IEP-driven, as you know. No special ed bus is stopping to pick up a child unless it is in an IEP. So, IEPs are in progress right now. So to purport to save money by expecting those IEPs to be changed, I don't know how that is expected. There was mention at the very beginning that health is not being taught in the elementaries. However, I don't see any indication that you're looking to hire a health teacher. So I assume that will go back to the phys ed and health teachers. I don't know what their schedules are right now, but I imagine it's going to be pretty busy. I guess that's about it for now. I guess if I could just impart to you, slow it down, be conscious, you're going to get a new permanent in, and it might very well be, Ms. Mendez, I don't know, but let the process be fair. And remember, your teachers are drowning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brent Scott, 75, Nestor Road. I'm the parent, my wife and I are the parent of two wonderful sons at Redwood Elementary. And I simply want to point out that a few years ago I was privileged to serve on the Gifted and Talented Reform Committee. And we've heard a lot here tonight about various committees. And one of the things we don't see on the website are who are on these committees. We don't know what board members are serving on what committees, nor which parents are serving on which committees. These could be people we know, people we could be talking to about our children's experiences. And I would encourage the, whoever handles the website to include that information. It's open government, it's good for the public, it's good for us parents to know where you're getting your information on policy, why you're coming to certain decisions on policy that affects our children. Thank you.
Anyone further to comment on agenda issues? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. It's late, Ms. Mendez.
Well, it's funny. So first, I guess to the majority of the comments that are in support of our librarians, we too are in support of our librarians. Our budget is supporting all librarians and we recognize the value of their service to our students. Thank you for what you do. We are happy that this budget is able to move in the direction where we are able to ensure that the value you bring to our library media programs and our students is intact. Ms. Burnett, with regard to the elementary schedule, point taken. There you are, right? And yes, we've, we're talking about that as well. We understand that that's a very big need for us to be consistent and really take care of the elementary schedule, start and end times, given the time that you are dismissed. So we understand that point. And that you like everyday math. Ms. Hendy, I'm going to come back to you in a second. I'm going to have Kristin Gogarty answer some of those questions with regard to special education. The ones that I can answer, I will. Specifically, students who are graduating, those are students who are graduating high school or graduating their program, not changing IEPs. Do you know the cost for the pre-K?
There's, there's many costs associated to pre-K, spread out through the budget, so if you give me some time, I can come up with a report exactly what the cost is budgeted for next school year. So I can have that for the next meeting.
Very good. Mrs. Surley, we'll look into your comments and your concerns around the Chromebooks, the one-to-one initiative, the assessment, the current costs we do have. So I'll be able to take your questions. If you wouldn't mind forwarding them to me, then I'll be able to answer them thoroughly. With regard to feedback from teachers and staff, yes, through the listening sessions, I've received a lot of feedback from the staff, specifically at Edison, our sixth grade, and wanderings around letting students take Chromebooks home and the damages, et cetera, et cetera, or the screen time as well. And so then, teachers have shared many of the similar concerns. We can look to formalize that feedback so that we can share that with you. All right. I don't know the last name, it's Rosnier, I think, Justin. I think we had some really good ideas here to think about, so, okay. So then we'll think about those ideas, I guess that's to the board more directed regarding solar panels and we can think about recycling and preparing for the census. The ideas around not insourcing our PD, it's a combination. What we are looking to find is an efficiency with the school business PD, but that does not mean we will not have any external PD or consultants coming in. It was just, but there is an efficiency there. Mr. Salinas, I don't know perhaps if you were here for the whole of the presentation, but in it you do see social and emotional learning and addressing that area for our students, we've budgeted for that. We've not made any reductions to counseling at the elementary level. The professional development for the teachers is definitely still in the budget across multiple areas. We had a slide dedicated to that. So you see professional development in shelter instruction for math, for ELA. We see professional development for technology. We have two instructional technology persons who provide PD in that area specifically to our staff. They have committees and they push into the classrooms and they really help the staff in that area. So, that is a priority, it is still maintained in the budget, it's just now really aligned to our goals. Diversity is also in there, we've budgeted for that, diversity training in the four prongs that we've identified at our last board meeting, so that is present. With regard to trailers, we have removed, or we're in the process or in this budget is removing the trailers at Redwood, correct? And at Gregory? So that's also in the budget to remove the trailers from those two schools. We can, Ms. Ruffo, definitely have conversations with Sedexo, I don't know where you are, with Sedexo to consider educating or continuing to educate our parents with regard to allergens. And I think through the work of the committee, that can certainly be a very deliberate goal to have that partnership for them to take a lead in addressing the concern. For Microsoft 365, we have already identified the classes that we believe it's being taught in and Microsoft Office, and so then we'll dig deeper into that. That goes to Ms. Noroki and as well as Mr. Robertson. So, to Mr. Schwartzbaum and Ms. Labb, there are no new initiatives, there are no new programs that are being presented. The ELA and math programs are a result of, again, I don't know if you were here for the beginning of that where we explained it, where this is our third year or fourth year on really implementing the assessment of those two programs. The ELA program remains the same, there are no changes, and the math program, again, we're in the fourth year for implementation in 1920 with those expired texts, so there's no change in programs. With regard to health teachers, they are in the budget, we have two health teachers in the budget. And Kristin, can you talk about the questions around special education? And also, when we talked about transportation, we specified it would not include the IEPs.
Okay, so I know Ms. Hendy, Mrs. Mendez and Mr. Calavano answered some of your questions with regards to the audit. And if we considered what those needs were for next year in the budget, they are considered in the budget. With regards for training for de-escalation, so the crisis prevention intervention, we have a staff member in the district who is a certified turnkey trainer. So she attended the turnkey session with crisis prevention intervention to go through that turnkey component and she has turnkeyed the training. So what that entails is staff members who are trained in CPI have received 12 hours of training. The first six hours are verbal and non-verbal de-escalation and the second six hours are physical restraint. We recognize that using physical restraint can be severe and extreme, it is an absolute last resort and I can't emphasize that enough. So we do, with the new restraint and seclusion law, when a child is restrained, we have to fill out a documentation form, that's an internal use. A narrative of the incident needs to be written up and we need to notify the parent the day the restraint was used and we have to provide a written follow-up report to the parent within 48 hours. As part of our internal documentation, that involves a debriefing with the staff members. Typically, when a child is restrained, we recommend that there be additional staff in the room to support them, monitor the student because the safety of the student is of utmost importance to us. I think Ms. McAbby had a question about the Learning Ally program. We did receive this program free of charge through a grant that was funded through the NJ DOE. It was just offered to the district several years ago. It was really for students with a print disability. The state lost the grant moving into this school year and it is a significant cost and it's not a district cost, it's a per-building cost. This year, we did shift with our case managers to bookshare. It's fairly similar to Learning Ally, a little bit different. Ironically, this past Friday, our representative reached out to me and they reinstated it. So they're giving us access at least through the end of the year with the hope that the grant is going to continue into next year. So I did ask that she, you know, reestablish an account with all of our schools. I'm in the process of notifying the case manager so they can then, you know, relay that information to the teachers.
Thank you. And Mr. Parker, I skipped over your question with regard to gifted and talented and placing on the websites, the committees and who's on those committees, absolutely, that's the plan. And so then, this week, what you can expect to see is the charge of the committees and the solicitation to parents and community members to fill out a letter of interest and to see who wants to be on those committees. And then after those committees are formed, then we will post who's on those committees, absolutely.
President Helper, I just want to address Mr. Kramer. Regarding his question with state health benefits plan, Brown and Brown, if it wasn't last year, it was the year before, they did actually go out to price out the state health benefits plan. At that time, that plan was higher than the plan we were in, but I will have them do that again this year to see where we are, you know, compared to what our renewal rates are going to be.
Sure.
Mr. Calavano, do you know how many school districts are still in the state health benefits plan?
No, I don't know of him.
Okay. Because I know there weren't any efficiencies to going in because you don't get to take advantage of economies of scale if there's only a couple districts in. And I know the last time I checked, which was maybe a couple of years ago, there were only 28 districts in. I'm sure it's less now.
Okay. So just a few responses. For the comments on and from our librarians, very much agree with you, hear you, and I thank you for your comments, specifically to Ms. Reese and Ms. Tindall. It's exactly what I was talking about, about the Rice letters. I am very sorry and I don't intend to let that happen again in the future. It just wasn't the right way to do that. Ms. Surley, I know it's frustrating when things go late, I share your frustrations. I think we've been doing fairly well this year at keeping things running smoothly and quickly, but some of our meetings, because they're meetings of the board held in public, sometimes we do need to do what we need to do. sometimes we do need to do what we need to do, and they do go longer than we would all ideally prefer sometimes. Mr. Schwartzbaum, as I think mentioned, there is no change in ELA, just its materials for existing programs. Math has been an ongoing process for three years. Come July, it'll be the beginning of the fourth year of that process, which is when it would be, which is when the sixth to eighth grade program would be put in place. I don't think it's fair to say that we would switch programs under another superintendent, given the length of time since that last change to the math program. You know, these decisions shouldn't be made top-down just because a new body comes in, and this existing in-process decision on math is not top-down. It's come out of a committee process and has been four years in the making when it'll be put into effect. Mr. Kramer and Ms. Lab, sorry to lump you together. It's, it's, there's a lot of hard processes to be made during this, hard choices to be made during this process, and I appreciate what you both have to say. Extremely aware of the SALT issues myself. I've been putting off doing my own taxes for exactly that reason. I know it's hard. I appreciate where you're coming from on that. You know, and Ms. Lab, you know, if we do have a three-year-long process on determining what a new math program should be, and we have teachers telling us that they need new materials for their existing ELA program, I don't want to be in a position where we have to tell people that they should wait a year, or two years, or three years, or, I don't know, how long is, who's been out the longest now at South Orange? Who knows, right? We know what superintendent searches look like in other districts. I don't want to do that to teachers or to students who need things and tell them they're going to have to wait and wait and wait. You know, in the end, we have to decide if we want educational leadership or not. And while I'm very cognizant of past issues with things being put into place too quickly and without enough, possibly without enough forethought, you know, I think that we've acted in favor here of having leadership and getting some things done that we're hearing the calls, not from the top, but from the teachers and from our families to do. So that wraps up that. In closing that section, we can now move on to personnel, where I need a motion for Personnel Items 1 through 4.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
All right, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes, with the exception of number four, under A.
Are you abstaining or no?
No.
No number four? Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trig Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Next, may I have a motion for curriculum and instruction, Items 1 through 4.
All motion?
I'll second.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes, except I abstain from my reference on attachment number three.
Mrs. Trig Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes, also abstaining for myself on Item 1, Attachment 3. Next, may we have a motion for Finance Special Services, Number 1 through 2.
All motion?
Second.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trig Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay, for Business Office, we'll separate these out. First, may we have a motion for Item 1.
All motion?
Second.
All right, Mr., any discussion?
Yes. I know the board, we made several comments at the very beginning, but I wanted to add an additional comment. Within the budget tonight, there is an allotment of $30,000 for another special education review. While I support public education and I support what the hard work the administration has done, I recommend that we do not do the second special education review audit because we just had one. While this new special ed audit is specifically for IEPs, I believe we should wait until the action plan, which we approved last year, is completed, and the items in the action plan actually go through 2020. So I'd like to wait until the items in the action plan is completed, and we've reviewed what has been done by the special ed department, and then we revisit having another special education review before that action plan is completed.
I concur with Ms. Mordecai. It's not a mate, it's not a huge cut in the budget that size, but every place we can find, we don't necessarily need to do it. And we should think about what's the internal process to gradually conduct that audit and gather that data, rather than paying for another external one.
I would just say, I agree in part. I think that's one of the things that we can look at, obviously, in the time period between now and when we get to the final budget. I do like, Mr. Robertson, your idea about seeing if we can do some of that internally and accomplish some of the same goals. Certainly something to talk about. With that, I think we're ready to vote on this.
Mrs. Merklinger?
No.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trig Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
No.
President Alper?
Yes. Right, continuing through Business Office, I need a motion for Items 2 through 6.
I will motion?
Second, anyone?
Second.
Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trig Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
And President Alper?
Yes. May I have a motion for Reports, Item 1.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
By who second it?
I'll second.
Okay.
Let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
I abstain.
Mrs. Trig Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay. Next up, petitions and hearings of citizens. If you'd like to comment on any other topic, you can have three minutes at the microphone. Again, please let us know your name and your address. And if you have a need for further follow-up, there's a clipboard right over there on the side where you can place your information.
Hi, good evening. Suzanne Pennell, 27, Fairview Avenue. Looks like I picked a great Monday to come to a meeting. Oh, sorry. Anyway. I wanted to speak tonight of a subject dear to my heart. Some updates on West Orange Public Schools alumni who are currently part of the United States military and deployed. We have three Naval Academy graduates. Lieutenant Eric Waschgiewitz is presently on submarine the USS Hartford in an undisclosed location. First Lieutenant Matt Donovan is serving with the United States Marines out of Oahu, Hawaii. Ensign Dylan Pennell, my boy, is deployed aboard his destroyer, last posted location in the Persian Gulf. Second Lieutenant Stephen Marancy, United States Army, graduate of Rutgers and the Army ROTC program there, is currently deployed overseas as well. We also have alumni enlisted in the Navy, Air Force, Army, and Marines who are training and serving at bases around the country. As of now, there are two alumni at West Point to be joined this summer by three graduates of the class of 2019. And of special note, Cadet Gina Marie Arabito at the Air Force Academy will be commissioned a second lieutenant and pilot at the end of May. Why is it important we discuss these young men and women? Because each of them served their country, or will serve in the coming months and years. They protect and defend each of us, our freedoms and rights and our way of life. They will travel the world on rescue and humanitarian missions, as well as times they're needed here at home. The freedom which allows us the right to this public meeting and to express ourselves at this microphone is provided in part by the commitment of these young men and women. Though you may not know all or any of them, it would be a good and necessary thing each day to think about them all and keep them in your thoughts or prayers. They are all graduates of our public schools. It wasn't too long ago each of them were playing in the playground at our elementary schools, performing in their middle school bands, or drilling with our junior ROTC at the high school. They have earned our pride and respect. Thank you for your time, and may they all come home safe.
Thank you.
Hi, Paula Healy, 9 Lowell Ave. I'm actually here on behalf of the Edison PTA. We are having our very first tricky try, and I wanted to talk to the room full of people, invite them to come, but they all left. So I'm hoping that maybe our board members, or some of them, may be able to come to our Edison PTA on April Friday, April 5th. We have over 200 baskets. This is something that we need to have, be successful in supporting our students at the end of the year. We are trying to cut back on the cost of their field trip, their student activities or celebrations, so this tricky try is very important to our Edison PTA. I do have another question. People talk about cutting out buses for our extracurricular students at the end of the day. What I'd like to know is what that cost is, and then what that cost compares to the students that we have to bus out of district because they choose not to come to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremiah Salinas, 7, Crystal Ave. First of all, thank you for responding to my emails, Mr. Calavano. I had a question that was never was answered, which was the repairs of the HVAC system that we spoke about last year? The location of the repairs or the replacement of those units? I don't remember hearing anything about that. I know that there was a huge issue with it here at the high school and at some of the elementary schools as well, too, but we never heard about that at all. Also, am I misunderstanding this? But did the district actually impact itself negatively by not using the $3 million that was returned to the taxpayers last year? And that's the reason why we're not getting more money this year? Possibly? I don't know. So that's the question. When you said that you're not cutting back professional development, it says substitute usage for professional development. That means that teachers are now going to have to do what in order to go to professional development? And you also said that you're not cutting it back, but over here, it says that out of district professional, the proposed budget includes the following additional reductions, out of district professional development. So this year says that you are, but then you just told us that you're not. I don't see why there's a need for my taxes or anybody's taxes to go up every year. Since 2011, the school district actually has been receiving a lot more funding based on shared health, cost benefits, and premiums and stuff like that, in addition to what the new school formula aid is as well. So I just don't see why the cost continues to rise if we're getting more money than what we're actually able to generate from tax revenue. Thank you.
Jason Lamont Jackson, 34, Sunnyside Road. Teacher, coach, and resident of West Orange. I had come with one thing to talk about, and then literally about an hour and a half before the meeting, something else came up. So I tried to get them both in. As a coach, we have our annual awards banquet, and I started in the middle of last year. And it was brought to my attention after one of the seasons that the board actually pays for six awards for all of the programs. And so I had Boys and Girls Track. I went, you know, put the awards in, and then found out from the company that it was only six because track and field was combined. Then a few weeks later, I just, actually last week, I just attended, my son's on the swimming team, I went to the swimming banquet, and noticed that they gave out six awards as well. Went up to talk to Coach Nevada, I'm not speaking on behalf of him, but there are some programs that are considered combined when they really should be separate. Although Boys and Girls Track may be out at the track at the same time, or Boys and Girls Swimming may be in the swimming pool at the same time, they don't compete together, and we want to be able to recognize them separately. So that's kind of what I had come to, just to talk about for the, for the future. It was our, Spring Track started the first of March. We have our first competition coming up on the 4th, which is away against Columbia, and then we have our huge fundraiser, really for the first time in a while, we're hosting a meet on the 6th. And so it was, not that it was brought to my attention, we knew that there was some equipment that was faulty and damaged over the summer and was supposed to be repaired and hadn't got repaired. But then just some other information was brought to my attention where I really need to, I did leave my email, and everybody knows how to get in touch with me, but I spoke to Principal Moore earlier this morning, and would really like to be able to speak with either Mr. Calavano, the principal, and the athletic director. I have a prep period tomorrow at the end of the day, because we're going to have close to 2,000-plus student athletes that'll be here next Sunday, next Saturday, April 6th, for a track meet called the Mounty Relays. Normally, Montclair High School hosts it. They're getting their track redone. We have a good relationship with them, and they asked us would we like to host it, which this would be a huge fundraiser for us and kind of take care of us throughout the rest of the year. I know we always come to you for Nationals when we have student athletes go to Nationals, so this is something that would be able to take care of that and meet some other needs. But I definitely would like to be able to meet with somebody very soon to kind of address some things so that we could host this meet efficiently on the 6th, and then moving forward with handling other things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorbanette, 63 Plott Place. So I started talking about this when my daughter was still here in high school. She is now a sophomore in college, and I'm still back because nothing's been done. I asked for diversity training. We still have none. I saw an article with the Scales in the, I think it was in the patch, that talked about diversity. And it's a need. There's a need I see on the side as a parent and behind the scenes as a teacher, inappropriate things that people say, insensitive things that people say to children, that people say to me that they shouldn't be saying. And my concern was, when my daughter was here, some of you know Jewel, and she's very vocal. Jewel would correct teachers and educate teachers, and my problem was, I didn't think that my 16-year-old at the time should be educating educators on what is insensitive and inappropriate. And only because she was very vocal, she wouldn't let it pass. But I have another child who is very quiet, very sensitive, and if things are said to her, she's just going to internalize them. And there are other children that are like that as well. And things that I and my people have said to me, other colleagues, that they, and I don't think that people have malicious intent, they just don't know that that's something you shouldn't say, really inappropriate things and offensive things. So I think it's something that needs to be done sooner than later, and I would like to know what is the progress on this training? Because I've been teaching now in this district for 14 years, and there's never been anything that has addressed the entire body of teachers and staff and faculty that, you know, really goes to the point of sensitivity in training and diversity. And I know every time I get up here, Sandra tells me there's something, but there is not, I'm gonna say it again, there is, there is not, there is nothing in the district, district-wide, and the program through Keen is not a diversity training, it was something specifically, and I did that, too, with, with the Holocaust. You've brought that up as well. That is not what I'm looking for. You mentioned that that was something that we were doing, you did, we could go back and check it. But that has nothing to do with what I'm talking about. There needs to be district-wide training for all of the teachers, all of the staff, so that everybody is sensitive and understands what's appropriate and what is not. So I would like to know where we are with that, because Mr. Rutske promised that to me two years ago. And like I said, my daughter's about to finish her sophomore year in college, so really like three years ago.
Thank you. Anyone further? Ms. Demendez?
Okay. Ms. Pennell, our heart is always on our sleeve every time you speak, because we hear your love for the military, we hear your love for your son and your care for their service. So thank you for sharing. So, thank you for sharing once again how much our military personnel are really defending and protecting our civil liberties. Ms. Healy, Friday, April 5th. Tricky Tray, are you still here? Hi. I'm gonna try to be there, too. So, we will try to get that data for you with the late bus, right? I know it's an issue, but what we did was we converted those four into three. So, we moved those times where it really shouldn't, at least hopefully not impact the students as much. But with the board liaisons, we're going to meet and really go over the data and the routes and overcrowding and all of those, so we'll know how that, what that looks like. Mr. Salinas, repairs of HVACs. We've prepared some updates, they're all posted on our website since we've had that discussion. We've briefly referenced that we are going to need to consider that as a budget impact as we move forward. With regard to the professional development, your statement was that we have no professional development and that we're cutting all of our professional development. And my response was, we're not cutting all of it, we're finding an efficiency and we're still able to provide the professional development in all of the categories that were in the PowerPoint. In addition, specifically, the ones that go out of district on school business, those are the ones we're looking for an efficiency on because we continue to provide professional development in-house, we continue to have consultants come in, we continue to have our district PD sessions. So PD is not stopping as a whole, we are finding an efficiency on a specific line of PD and with it, the substitute coverage. Mr. Alper, I'll let you answer the one with the athletes and the board. And Ms. Soto, the diversity training, we've been talking about that for the past few months. Again, that will be posted this week for the committee members to start, and we have an action plan that's going out. So that's been in development and this is in the works, so you'll be happy to see that.
And I just want to address Mr. Salinas regarding the $3 million. The other option that we could have, we had, we could have did some of the building upgrades or projects that we have budgeted in his year's budget and also take care of the retaining wall that still needs to be funded. So those are the projects that we could have used the $3 million for.
Mr. Calavano, do you happen to know off the top of your head the sum for the non-public busing number? I think I know what it is, but I don't want to say it wrong, but I feel like it's $800,000 at $1,000 a pop. I'm within $50,000 on that number, I'm certain. So if you're choosing to send your children to private school and the township isn't able to provide a bus, then you're getting $1,000 per child and that adds up fast. And that's state law, we don't have a choice on that, it used to be 800 and change, right?
It used to be 884. Now it's $1,000 per student and it's $546,000. $546.
I was off, I'm more than that. $546. I'm gonna guess that's more than some of our late buses, but. Ms. Pennell, thank you very much. And thank Dylan again for, you know, driving to start ROTC because I think that's sent more kids down that great path. I'll be at Tricky Tray, I hope everyone else is at the Tricky Tray. Mr. Jackson, we should get you, we should get you together with Mr. Calavano and just so we can understand exactly what the procedure should be and see if there's anything that can be done there. And as Ms. Mendez said, diversity training is in the budget, so I think we're going to actually see real movement on that very soon. And with that, you can piggyback.
All right. Coach Jackson, I just want to find out, how many of your kids are going down to Penn Relays? Do you have that numbers yet? All right, I pretty much go every year, so I'll look for the kids.
All right. Board member reports. Ms. Trig Scales, you're up.
Hi, Ms. Pennell. I just wanted to thank you so much for reminding us that we need to take the time to be grateful for those who are serving their countries and we will definitely keep them in thought and prayer. So keep reminding us, okay? Kiss back at ya. And everyone who spoke so passionately tonight about the budget. You know, this is new for me and as I said, I've been on the other side. And so, as we go forward looking at further efficiencies, I know that there's going to be a lot of conversation among the board members along with Ms. Mendez and Mr. Calavano before we get to that May 6th. I listened very intently, I didn't have a lot to say about the budget, but I listened and so I'll have more to say later. Okay, on another note, on Saturday, I attended a New Jersey School Boards Association workshop on effective communication. And it was very informative. It is helping board members to communicate more effectively among themselves and with the public. And it actually talked about four different types of communicators. And I'm gonna suggest that we get a training for our board so we can label ourselves and learn how to communicate more effectively. Last week, the Essex County Education Association, and I'm so sorry, we had a large turnout of our staff this evening and they have gone, but we have some representatives here, sponsored its annual Pride in Public Education at the Livingston Mall. And thank you to Ms. Sharon Ortiz from the high school who represents our district on the county committee. And our students and teachers showcased our fine visual and performing arts. And this was the program, and I must say that West Orange was a standout. We had Gregory School's Concert Band Orchestra and Chorus, we had Mount Pleasant's Concert Band Orchestra and Chorus, we had the high school's Step Teams and Jubilee Choir, we had Redwood School's Band Orchestra and Chorus, Washington School's Band Chorus, both 5th grades, Liberty Middle School, their Dance Ensemble, Grade 7, we had Kelly Middle School's Chorus, Grade 5, we had St. Cloud's 3rd Grade Recorders and the 5th Grade Band Orchestra and Concert, we had Hazel Avenue Band and Orchestra, Grade 5, we had Edison's Orchestra, Concert Band and Vocal Ensemble. Outstanding. And then for the art displays, we had Gregory, Mount Pleasant, Hazel, Liberty, Edison, West Orange, Phys Ed Department, and West Orange High School Tech Automotive and Engineering. And I don't know how many people got to see it, and I'm so sorry that we didn't announce it the week in advance, but it comes in March every year. And so, we were well represented and a very proud moment for our schools in Essex County. Thank you.
I'm so sorry that I missed it this year, but I did get a pop-up on Facebook, so I did watch St. Cloud's performance livestream. That was very nice, very nice. Last week, March 14th, I had the honor of presiding over the Essex County School Boards Association 2019 Unsung Heroes Student Recognition Program. Our nominee this year was Jomari Dominguez from West Orange High School. Jomari is an amazing high school student here. She formed a mentor program for the seniors at the high school to connect with the freshmen spec ed students to make sure they felt welcome and included. And it was just such an amazing program, every high school in Essex County nominated a student. Ms. Mendez attended with me and she welcomed everybody to our district. Sedexo provided cookies and a fruit platter. So it was really, really nice having everyone here to showcase Liberty Middle School where it was held. It's such a pleasure every year to preside over that event and I brought that to Essex County three years ago. Hopefully, one of my colleagues will be an Essex County officer next year because my term, yeah, I'm looking to the left and right, because my term as president of the Essex County School Board will be up in May. So hopefully, one of my colleagues will run and continue that tradition to make sure that we host that. It was very, very well attended and I'm sure Ms. Mendez will share my sentiments about all the heartfelt testimonies of students who overcame such challenges, from students who were hearing impaired, visually impaired, students who've lost siblings, parents, and still went on to achieve GPAs in excess of 4.0 and get accepted to many, many colleges. And many of them elite. These students are so amazing. They went through so much stuff that I don't think I've gone through in my lifetime and, you know, most of them are 18 or younger. I also attended, in my role as Board of Directors member, the New Jersey School Boards Association Board of Directors meeting. And I'm happy to say for the 10th consecutive year, New Jersey School Boards will not increase their member dues, so that's good. We can maintain our dues budget there. And again, workshop this year will be the third week in October. The commissioner has already approved the four nights of the training, so it'll be great to see everybody there in October. That's all I have.
Very quickly, I attended most of the Heroes Award and it was, it was pretty phenomenal. I mean, those kids are really off, they're just really on a whole other level. The things that they've taken, the responsibilities they've taken on, the things they've overcome. And I ran from there over to the Boys Basketball Awards Dinner and just very briefly, without going through in detail, I think Mr. Coach Lamont Collins and his coaching team are doing really what Keneese had done for her girls and starting to really create a culture in West Orange around basketball. And I really commend him, he's doing some, making some bold new steps with starting the AAU team. But the sense of family that was in that room was a really beautiful thing. And these young men, for me, was touching because I'd coached about half of them in Mountain Top League or helped run clinics with them. And to watch them blossom into the really incredible young men they are now was just, was a beautiful thing. I attended last week, speaking to diversity. I was a guest of the trainer for Philly Dickinson at Microsoft's local headquarters in Island and was, there they were hosting the IMCP group, I.A.M.C.P. group. And that's basically Microsoft's international organization of partners. So you had Telecom, you had pretty much the range of everything that's touched by Microsoft in the room and Mr. Calavano will be getting proposals soon. But the FDU trainer ran a brief session, a brief diversity training session. I went to get a taste of what the approach that she took and it was a fantastic experience. You'll be getting a proposal the week after next within budget. And we also, the IMCP also offers STEM grant, not large, it's like $12,000 STEM grant that we can apply for. And they're open to helping us develop strategic partnerships, you know, internships for our students, even looking at how they can help work with the business CTE department in regard to Microsoft-related certifications. So I'll be forwarding that information to you. Thank you.
So, I'm not sure if everyone has seen it, but on March 18th, Governor Murphy took action on a lot of new bills and items in legislation and I thought with, I'm not going to go through all of them, I promise. But what stood out to me was two of the bills promote mental health awareness. And it's incorporating instruction on mental health and suicide prevention into our curriculum and that's something near and dear to my heart. I know our town council is working on something within the town as well and I know we're working with our school systems. So I was excited to see this at the government level. So we've got a lot of events coming up in our schools. I just want to recognize, Ms. Pennell, thank you as always for recognizing our military. Our Air Force Junior ROTC, which I know you had a big part of, was just at the National Jewel Competition in Dayton, Ohio, so they just got back from that. Gregory had their night museum for celebrating Black History and I heard that that was fantastic and that everyone really enjoyed it. I'm sorry? Oh. So I had heard, so I heard that it was great, I unfortunately couldn't get there, a lot of events going on. Our middle school hockey team just defeated Randolph 3 to 2 in the Rock the House Tournament. So, good job by them. Yesterday, the Mountain Top and West Orange Recreation, they jointly run the basketball program in West Orange and they had their finals yesterday, so congratulations to all of our middle school teams and to our St. Cloud Boys and Girls teams who are both undefeated for the season. So congratulations to them, I think they get banners hung up in school, in the gym. This Thursday is the Roosevelt Invention Convention at 6:30. If you haven't seen it already, the West Orange High School Student Council is hosting the Senior Citizen Prom on April 10th in the Tornoff Cafeteria and that's always something that's enjoyable, so I encourage those that can attend to go. Mamma Mia is coming out April 5th through the 7th, so definitely encourage everyone to come see our talented arts program students. And in terms of athletics, we have our spring prep rally this Friday at 7 o'clock in the Tornoff Gym and I believe that's open to everyone in the community, so I hope to see a lot of you there to support our spring sports teams. And speaking of, there is a Mountaineer Movie Night being hosted by the high school baseball team in conjunction with the PAL and Mountain Top Youth Sports Baseball Program. And they're going to be featuring the final season, it's movie night, those be games. Actually, one of our sporting goods vendors will be there for bat demos, so that's from 6 to 9 in the Tornoff Cafeteria. And I also want to congratulate and send best wishes to our girls' baseball softball and our track and field program that kickoff next week on April 1st. For Coach Jackson, if anyone has ever seen one of the relays, we had a meet here last, I think it was almost over the summer, or right before the summer season, and it was the youth sports team and they were, it was fabulous. It was a lot of fun, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of people, so definitely if we can get that, the Mounty relays here, that'd be great. And then registration is still open for Right on Sports, our summer enrichment program, and for the Marching Mountaineers, the season is available online, you can click on it. So, I encourage anyone who's interested to join those programs.
Just a couple quick ones from me. On the 13th, I got to go to the Edison Stream Fair event, I think a few of us were there at various times, right? Science, Technology, Robotics, Engineering, Art, and Math, you know, if you add ELA and social studies to that, you can just call it school, we've already got just about everything else, right? But it was, it was great. It was like a modern science fair and, you know, they had like, the kids did their little, they had their booth set up with their own projects going and then there were like, science stations set up with computers and coding and I could not figure out the coding, but it was still pretty cool. I was not smarter than a 6th grader, but it was good. The Gregory Sedexo and Black History Event really was amazing. It was, I really liked when we walked around into the classrooms and I think every classroom had like, student-made versions of inventions that African-American inventors had made, which was just really cool. I was like playing with like, pretend super soakers, it was, it was really fun. Although, I still don't understand what happened with the judging because the kid with the meatballs, Nate, got ripped off. Piper's thing was really good, but Nate got ripped off a bit there. And I was at the Livingston Mall event that Ms. Trig Scales was talking about and weirdly enough, and I know nobody cares except me and her probably, but that's where I met you a few years ago when I was there for taking pictures of Gregory for their yearbook and you were there, I think, running the event that year. Talked to you for a while on the doorway there. Yeah, you didn't even remember, but it was cool. Yeah, I got to see Gregory's musicians and also Mount Pleasant's, I think, was up right after them, it was pretty nice. So that was great and I think that's it. Our next board meeting right here at 8 o'clock in the evening on April 8th. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Aye.
Aye.
Go home.